It's such a simple thing you can do, just connecting your washer out to your backyard. And it's legal.
City Councilmember Paul Corretts, state officials, and other environmental activists join Jamie at her home to applaud her efforts and encourage other residents to keep watering their trees, even if they've already ripped out their lawns. Corretts said Angelenos must do everything they can to save our trees.
Trees keep the heat down in our neighborhoods. Trees sequester carbon dioxide and actually fight global warming. Trees clean and retain a huge amount of water and hold soil in place.
In an effort to protect the city's trees, Corretts recently introduced a slate of motions to City Council aimed at combating the drought by developing a plan to improve the health of LA's trees and by redirecting used water to the city's water treatment plants for recycling and reuse. Meanwhile, experts from Tree People had a few tips and suggestions for residents when watering their trees.
We need to make sure that we are doing that under the whole canopy of the tree, not just at the base of the tree, especially on the mature trees that we have. So, put that water out. It's great to use a drip system like Jamie has installed here. It lets the water soak in slowly and deeply, at least 18 inches.
Officials say with a little effort, you can still have your lush yard and save water at the same time. And this week, we begin a multi-part series on a new city initiative called City Link L.A., which officials say will transform Los Angeles into a technological hub of high-speed internet access for all. Medical student Sandra Reyes is studying to be a nursing assistant at the Concord Career College in North Hollywood. She spends most of her day online watching educational videos and reading, but when she has to study at home, Sandra hits a roadblock on the information superhighway. That's because with about 12 devices being used at her house at the same time, her internet connection simply isn't up to speed.
In a perfect case scenario, if my internet was fast and I didn't have to buffer, it would be, um, it would actually depend on whether I was going to sleep at 10 or I was going to sleep at 2:00 in the morning. Because I would have to wait until it buffers and then still I have to retain all this information.
But city leaders are hoping to change all of that with a new initiative called City Link L.A. Launched by Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilmember Bob Blumenfield in 2014, the effort seeks to provide affordable and reliable high-speed internet and Wi-Fi to all LA residents and businesses, regardless of income or neighborhood.
That would be amazing.
I would love it.
Councilmember Bob Blumenfield says right now, some undeserved areas of the city don't have internet, creating a digital divide among more affluent neighborhoods which can afford high-speed internet. But he says City Link L.A. will ensure everyone in LA is connected equally. He says high-speed broadband is not only good for LA, but critically necessary.
I want to make sure that we are that city, that premier city of the future, that we're going to be competitive, that our students are going to have the knowledge and information, that we're going to have the free flow of information, the goods movement, both physically and virtually, that are going to make our city a success and make all of our residents a success.
And in order to do that, the city plans to enter into a public-private partnership with one or multiple internet providers that would invest in laying the fiber optic cable and all of the groundwork for the project. In return, the city would provide city-owned property, offer reduced costs, and fast-track permits to streamline the process. All of that at no cost to the taxpayer. City officials say they went to great lengths to understand the needs of a potential lender.
We think it's critical for, to increase the success of a project like this, to be able to have done our homework, to have learned what the best options are, and to make those options available so that we entice as many vendors as possible, regardless of who they are and where they're coming from, to be able to deliver an important project like this.
City leaders say they hope to have the public partnerships in place and break ground by next year. While the LA River may hold the key to LA's future growth and sustainability, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti is encouraging TV productions to take advantage of state tax credits, and Angelenos ditch four wheels for two during Bike Week L.A. These stories in City Beat. The LA River is the next frontier. That's according to a new report by the LA Business Council Institute, an organization that seeks to strengthen and promote environmental and economic sustainability. The report was the focus of a recent sustainability summit. Held at the Getty Center, topics ranged from opportunities for new housing, economic growth, and sustainable development along the LA River. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti said that environmental sustainability is tied to urban sustainability. He said understanding that connection will help lead to future economic growth and sustainability in Los Angeles, and the LA River is a great starting point.
Many ways, that river is a prism for many of the values that we hold and an opportunity, a platform for us to see greater transportation, health indicators, sustainability, urban ecology, open space, as well as economic development, too.
The mayor also talked about the recently released Sustainability City Plan, a comprehensive roadmap aimed at preparing LA for a sustainable future, both environmentally and economically. Metro and city leaders kicked off Bike Week L.A. last week to help folks gear up for Sic La Via, which takes place at the end of the month. Various bike-friendly activities were held, from free MetroLink train rides to bike safety education classes, all in an effort to encourage Angelenos to bike more often. One biker, who takes the bus from Palos Verdes and then pedals to work downtown, said his two-hour commute is worth it.
We all work with stress in our lives, and my best days at work are the days when I pedal in. I'm already, I've got the workout done, I come in, I'm calm, and it just makes for dealing with the rest of the day so much better.
It's about showing people about the possibilities when we not only educate ourselves about what is possible, but also making car drivers and other people aware that people are sharing the road with us.
More than $50 million in state tax credits are now available for new TV series, TV pilots, movies of the week, and mini-series, according to Mayor Eric Garcetti. In addition, more than $27 million in tax credits are available for relocating TV series, a television series that filmed its most recent season outside of California but is relocating to California because of the new tax credit. Mayor Eric Garcetti helped lead a statewide coalition to pass legislation tripling California's film and TV production tax credit to $1.65 billion over five years. The credit is expected to support 50,000 middle-class jobs. Downtown's Pershing Square will soon become a place the whole family can enjoy, as city officials broke ground on two new children's playgrounds. That's the focus of This Week in Tweets. Los Angeles city leaders came together to break ground on what will be two brand-new playgrounds for children at Pershing Square. LA-area resident Belinda Jackson tweeted a pic of city leaders with shovels in hand, writing, "Breaking ground, two new play areas." Another photo tweeted by Jackson showed the Department of Recreation and Parks General Manager Michael Schull making remarks on the podium. Wreckin' Parks also tweeted a pic of Councilmember Jose Uizar on the podium, writing, "Pershing Square playgrounds break ground." Another LA resident, Tom Nakanishi, posted a pic of a backhoe moving dirt at the location with downtown skyscrapers in the background. He posted, "Groundbreaking of Pershing Square Renew Playgrounds in Downtown LA." Thanks, Jose Uizar. The council member posted his own pic, writing, "Breaking ground on new Pershing Square playground with Wreckin' Parks long-time improvements planned through 2050." The two new playgrounds will be designed for children ages 2 to 12 and will feature play structures that will promote physical strength and social play. And that's our This Week in Tweets. Enjoying a movie on a warm summer night, a new Harry Potter exhibit, and a retrospective on a rock and roll legend? All this in This Week's Things to Do. With summer just around the corner, it's time for some outdoor movie nights. On select Saturdays, bring a picnic blanket and head over to the Autry South Lawn to watch classic movies projected in HD onto the largest outdoor movie screen on the West Coast. On Saturday, May 23rd, you can catch the coming-of-age film Almost Famous, starring Kate Hudson. Some of the city's tastiest food trucks and local bands will be on hand, plus every event is dog-friendly. Select museum galleries will also be open from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. The Autry and Griffith Park is located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way. As space is limited, reservations are recommended. For more information, visit theautry.org/programs. Harry Potter's legendary wizardry lives on at the Hollywood Museum. The museum's new collection of sorcery goes on display May 22nd and includes acquisitions from the Harry Potter film franchise. Come see original wands, Harry Potter's robe, his ultimate broom, blueprints of Hogwarts' School of Witchcraft and Wizardry. Spotlighted are new items from noted Harry Potter historian Christopher Knoll. The ultimate broom used by Harry Potter in the Sorcerer's Stone and his squill and ink bottle used while at Hogwarts' School of Witchcraft and Wizardry enhance the exhibit. For more information, visit thehollywoodmuseum.com. And if you're a fan of rock and roll, check out the Bill Graham and the Rock and Roll Revolution exhibit at the Skirball Center. It's the first comprehensive retrospective about the life and career of the rock legend. Recognized as one of the most influential concert promoters in history, Graham launched the careers of countless rock and roll legends in the '60s at a famed Fillmore Auditorium. As a promoter and manager, he worked with the biggest names in rock, including The Grateful Dead, Jefferson Airplane, Jimi Hendrix, Santana, Led Zeppelin, and The Rolling Stones. The exhibit is on display through October 11th at the Skirball Center, located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. For more details, visit skirball.com/exhibitions. And that's a look at some things to do. And finally, this week, construction along Reseda Boulevard isn't over yet, but cyclists near Cal State Northridge are already praising the latest colorful safety upgrades. Gil Reyes shows us from Northridge.
The most vibrant renovation along the stretch of Reseda Boulevard in decades is also easing the fears of cyclists.
I actually rode the bike, my bike here today, and I noticed the difference.
It's a one-mile stretch of green and striped bike lane from Parthenia to Plummer Streets on Reseda near Seesun. And not your typical bike lane, this is the city's first bike-protected lane. Cylindrical barriers and parked cars give cyclists layers of protection against moving cars.
And that buffer also gives this character an aesthetic, a welcoming visual appeal, so as you drive through, you want to stop and walk and shop.
Northridge Councilman Mitchell Englander and pals have collaborated on the vision plan for three years. They've added new trees and paved stone sidewalks to enhance the strip. There's also bright yellow furniture outside stores inviting passerbys to stop and relax.
People tend to park in the back, and we want to have a reason for clients and customers to walk along the sidewalk, to kind of sit and enjoy, and to visit businesses through their front door.
It's all part of Mayor Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative, a plan to beautify 15 busy streets to encourage more cycling, walking, and public space.
Students will come down from Seesun, ride their bike in the protected lane, come to Joyce's Coffee, and hang out on the sidewalk. We're soliciting feedback right now on how we can extend this project further up Reseda.
The city is offering money for good ideas, part of the push to make Seesun and Northridge a true bike and pedestrian-friendly college town. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Again, your Great Streets idea could earn you cash, $10,000 for individuals with opportunities to make more in matching grants. Visit ioby.org/la-great-streets to learn more. And that's going to do it for this edition of LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana K. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Sergeants, please call the members. Okay, good morning, good morning. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today's date is Wednesday, March 18th. No applause? May, oh, this is the wrong one. May 20th. Let's, we do not have a quorum at this time, but we do have some presentations for today. So if I could call up Mr. Blumenfield and, and I guess Ms. Martinez as well for today's first presentation.
Absolutely, Ms. Martinez. We are partners in this.
Please come on up.
All right, we can bring up behind us all the folks who were, so, good morning, Mr. President. I'm joined by my colleague, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez. And today what we're doing is we're honoring the hard-working, dedicated city employees who submitted applications to the Innovation Fund and whose ideas were selected for funding. When we started this process with the mayor taking the lead at the beginning, Councilwoman Martinez and I and the Innovation Productivity Commission, I remember I had someone come and ask me and thought if we needed to offer some sort of incentive or prize in order to get members of the city family to make submissions. They were worried that we wouldn't receive any applications unless we had some sort of financial incentive. But I wasn't worried back then because people who choose to work for the city of Los Angeles do so because they want to serve, because they love this city. The people who serve in this city, they gravitate to city work because they want to give back to our communities. They want to make our neighborhoods a better place to live and improve lives. I thought our city employees would submit ideas because they want to make a significant and positive impact on the way the city provides services. And I'm happy to say that the city family proved me right in spades. But that doesn't mean that they don't deserve recognition. And we are here today to express our sincere gratitude for their willingness not only to serve this city day after day after day and year after year, but to go above and beyond. I have no doubt that your Innovation Fund is just one example of the many ways that this group here has done that. And before I elaborate further and talk about the individual folks who submitted it, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. I'm proud to be here recognizing the city employees that have gone above and beyond in their job descriptions. The Innovation Fund is a rare program that utilizes the skills of city employees that have a better understanding of our departments and communities. They are truly at the intersection of our government and our neighborhoods. This program gives employees the opportunity to take the lead and improve our neighborhoods in a very hands-on way. And the employees before you are a prime example of individuals that are thinking outside the box and finding creative solutions to solve issues in our city. Now it's time that we step up and tackle the toughest issues facing our city today. Let's take up the challenge and find new and creative ways that our government can use technology to address these problems and then maybe we can see real change in our neighborhoods. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Blumenfield, and all of you here today. You are true pioneers of this program, and thank you very much for your dedication to our city.
Next, I want to turn over the mic to our councilman Mitch Englander, who was very involved in two of the proposals that came forward. And, Mr. Englander.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. President, government efficiency is no longer an oxymoron here in Los Angeles. With this Innovation Fund and what we're able to do to provide better services to Angelenos, it's not just about efficiencies. In fact, one of the very funds that was fully funded, and I got to thank my colleague Bob Blumenfield for this, because when they came to him and asked for half the funds, he said, "No, we're going to give you all the funds because this is a phenomenal program." Working alongside Dr. Eckstein, who's here as well, Chief Tarazas, who's here as well, the men and women of the Fire Department, we are creating a nurse practitioner program to handle and work with those most vulnerable in society, the chronic users of the 911 system, those folks who call oftentimes over 100, 200, and 300 times a year, if you can imagine that. You can imagine what that does to our 911 system and the fact that they're sitting there at hospitals with what we call wall time, waiting to check a patient in, when perhaps all they needed was a prescription, when perhaps all they needed was some mental health practitioners and specialists. Perhaps they had a minor injury, but they just keep calling because they don't know how to get help otherwise. This will forever change that, free up those resources, and ensure that we have our first responders available to help those who truly need help and are in a real emergency, in a real situation. We also are passing the online police reporting. So for minor incidents, if you can imagine this, you've lost a cellphone. You now, because of the requirement with your carrier and the insurance, have to go get a police report. So you have to take off the time of work, which means you're losing money. You have to go sit in traffic, go to a police station, take the valuable time away from an officer as well, while they could be doing other police functions, to fill out a police report. Now, in the privacy and in the comfort of your own home, you can actually go online, fill out a police report for minor incidents, print it out, and you're good to go. Innovation Funds is not just about saving taxpayer dollars, which this will do. It's about providing better services to all Angelenos. And I want to thank my colleagues, Bob Blumenfield and Nuri Martinez, for what they've been able to do to bring this fund to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mitch. Talking about a couple of, I want to just go through the list of the folks who are here behind us in terms of what they're bringing forward, what they've brought forward to the city to make us more efficient. As was mentioned, we want to recognize Dr. Mark Eckstein, who along with Mitch Englander, brought forward the concept of this nurse practitioner unit. As he talked about, it's going to be a one-year pilot, which we all hope will be expanded. It aims to provide efficient and effective health services to some of our most vulnerable folks. And it's going to free up valuable resources that will allow us to respond better to emergencies. We've talked a lot about it. It's really quite incredible. Also, I'm always saying that we need to bring Los Angeles into the 21st century. I'm sure you've all said that yourselves, and you hear me saying a lot. Mark Nakata found one way to get us closer to that goal by suggesting that we get a 3D printer for the Bureau of Engineering. In the last 10 years, all right, the last 10 years, BOE has produced more than 50 architectural models, with each model taking 16 hours on average to make. The printer will allow the creation of 3D models and thereby save staff time, show the stakeholders a more realistic view of the proposed projects, and quite frankly, it's just really a cool thing. And it doesn't cost that much. It's amazing, the bang for your buck that we're getting on these types of innovations. Sandeep Soni Arment, Kamchein, and Ken Houston, Ken I don't think is here today, but they brought us the idea, "Can I park here now?" That idea, I mean, how many times have you stared at a pole, a parking pole, filled with different seemingly conflicting parking regulations, and tried to figure out, "Am I allowed to park here? Am I going to get a ticket? What's going on?" For years, every parking restriction on a spot had its own sign, a sign for loading, for zone hours, a sign for street cleaning, a sign for parking permits. That meant sometimes a single parking spot could have more than eight signs on it. Now, thanks to this idea funded by the Innovation Fund, that question can be more easily answered with a grid style and eventually new regulatory signs. Sandeep Arment and Ken may be responsible for lowering the blood pressure of thousands of Angelenos through the creation of these parking signs. So in addition to being a parking sign measure, this is an important healthcare measure, which we're going to save a lot of dollars in our healthcare system. Unfortunately, those dollars probably go to the county and to other areas. We're not going to see those dollars, but it's a good thing nonetheless. Now, the Controller's Office, under the leadership of Controller Galperin and Deputy Controller Vijay Singhhal, made the proposal to create a mobile app that will let city employees access their paycheck information from any place at any time. Yeah. Now, right now, we only have access to these forms while using, you know, at a city computer, which may not be a huge problem if you have a desk and you're always at your computer. But for most employees who don't have an assigned computer, this is a major hassle. And for employees who want to be able to check these kinds of things, not during the office hour, but when they're sitting home, working on some of their own personal finance papers, this makes their life easier. The Controller's new app will allow its members to access the information whenever it's convenient for them. Now, Delia and Alexandro Puch, a husband and wife team, both city employees, submitted the idea for online police reporting that Mr. Englander was talking about. Delia actually had some experience with this when doing an online report with the Sheriff's Department, and she collaborated with her husband Alejandro, who is an officer with LAPD. As it turns out, as we talked about, these reports take a lot more time out of people's days. This is another one. When you talk about the healthcare benefits and lowering blood pressure, this is going to help a lot of people out at that department, but it's also going to free up police resources to work on things that they need to do, rather than spending a lot of time walking people through that process when they could be doing it in their pajamas at the comfort of their own home. Finally, I want to thank Michael Saylor for his submission, which will bring automated inspection units to the DWP penstock at the Castaic Power Plant. In the old way of doing things, it takes five to seven people, three to four hours to do a penstock walk at the Castaic Power Plant. Michael's idea will allow the department to buy quadcopters to inspect penstock and insulators on power poles and ultimately increase safety at DWP. Right now, the inspectors face hazards such as steep terrain, rattlesnake encounters, as we had in the summer months. Michael's idea will allow penstock to be inspected safely. This is one of those great ideas that is just organic, bottom-up. It's some folks who had to do these inspections and said, "I'm tired of being bit by rattlesnakes every time I go up there. There must be a better way." You walk into Sharper Image, you see the fact that they have these little mini drones there, and says, "Maybe the city can take advantage of this technology." It's a great idea that we're moving forward. So once again, I want to thank all of our inaugural Innovation Fund submitters and want to encourage those great ideas to keep coming. Innovate.lacity.org, remember that. City employees who hear my voice, you've got ideas. We know you have ideas. We know you want to make the city better. Take an example from these great folks who are behind me, who have done that, who have made it, pushed the city forward. Come forward yourself with great ideas. Together, we're going to make this city great and better than it is. Thank you so much. We have some certificates that we want to give out to all the folks up here. So again, thank you, all innovators.
And thank you all.
They already have the certificate, so congratulations.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonavista, Sadiel, Fuentes, Cucurella, Corretts, LaBons, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Weston, 13 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corretts moves, Cucurella in seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Fuentes moves, Martinez seconds.
Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there's a request to continue Item 20 to June 10. Again, Item 20 to June 10.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Items one through nine are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on one, two, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's move on, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Items 10 through 21 are items which public hearings have been held. I've been told, or requested rather, to hold Item 19 for an amending motion. And committee reports for Items 10, 11, and 12 have been circulated.
Have been?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's hold the one item that you referred to. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Members, we're dealing, we're moving on Items 10 through 21. I don't see anyone on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on that. So Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now let's move on, Mr. Clerk. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, sir. Urgent forthwith on Item 12.
Okay, we will move Item 12. Well, I think we can get away with an urgent today. Oh, no, you know what? Let's call for a quick vote on the urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's move on.
Very good, sir. That brings us to Items 20 through, excuse me, 22 through 39. There are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, Item 30, special, please.
30 held for Mr. Englander.
Thank you.
Okay, what cards on these items?
Mr. President, we do have cards on Items 22, 23, 27, 28, 30, 31, 32, 33, 35, and 38.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send Item 24 forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection. That brings us where?
That brings us to Items 40 and 41. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Mr. Cucurella at this point.
Mr. President, Budget and Finance waived those matters, so I have no recommendation on them at this point, but the memos, the recommendations of the city attorney are before members. I don't have a need to hear them in closed session unless members do.
Okay, well, okay, please, no applause. So if, at this point, members were going to vote on these items, so, I do have a card on one, so which one do we not have a card on? So we'll vote on Item 41.
And for Item 41, in the case entitled "City of Los Angeles versus Los Angeles LDC", there is a recommendation to accept $900,000 as full and final settlement of all claims.
Thank you. Let us prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Look, no applause, and please don't disrupt the meeting. And that's Mr. Spindler, Mr. City Attorney. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, Mr.?
Item 16 be sent forthwith, please.
Without objection. Mr. Fuentes, would you like to proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I have the distinct honor to be standing here with a true hero, Mr. Dorian Cole. Colleagues, on March 24th, at approximately 1:30 in the afternoon, one of our own motor officers from the Los Angeles Police Department's Central Traffic Division and a motorist collided in the carpool lane on the southbound 5 freeway just north of the 405 freeway in Silmar. The collision occurred right in front of Mr. Cole, who was driving his big-rig truck for Pacific Tank Lines. Obviously, concerned for the officer and the horrible accident ahead of him, he leapt into action. He, without hesitation, Mr. Cole stopped and positioned his rig to block traffic to make sure that the two-down motorists and our officer were protected from further harm. He jumped out of his truck, dialed 911. He then had the ability to see through the fog of this terrible situation. He collected the officer's wallet, badge, and gun, and stood with the officer until help arrived. He witnessed the incident, and he was brave and selfless and thought of the injured people in front of him. And for that reason, colleagues, I wanted to bring him today to City Council so that we can properly honor a hero who jumped into action for one of our own, one of our officers. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Dorian Cole.
You know what? Let's give Mr. Cole a hero's welcome.
First and foremost, I want to say good morning to all you Angelenos. This is my first time coming up in this building. Shame on me. I've never been here. It's a beautiful building. And by me coming here, I felt like I forgot to wear my suit. I think I left it in the cleaners.
You look like a hero, okay?
We at Pacific Tank Lines want to thank you all. My wonderful boss, Matt McDonald, Ted Hancharic, and his wonderful wife. Oh, here you go. This is a "we" award. It's not me. It's a "we" award. Curtis Christie and my safety manager, John Gossi. I just did what any reasonable-thinking person would have done. It was scary at first witnessing it because I seen Sheldon, I mean, Mr. Williams. It was scary at first witnessing it because I seen Sheldon, I mean, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, flip over and hit his head, but I just stayed calm, stayed cool, and just, it was just scary. I don't ever want to see that, never. I hope I never see it. And we thank y'all. We thank y'all very much because I saw not only an officer, I saw a human being. I saw a family man. I saw someone that, you know, day in, day out, you know, spending livelihoods and protecting, you know, protecting us. So, you know, I just seen a human being, that's all. So, I thank y'all for having us here, me and my Pacific Tank Lines family, and that's it.
And, Mr. Cole, just let me say that the city appreciates you. I think that you're a perfect example of what many of us hope we would be, and I just don't, I don't think the officer minds you calling him by his first name. You can even give him a nickname if you'd like, but let's give Mr. Cole another round of applause. He's amazing.
Colleagues, I'd like to invite Captain Ann Young of the Central Traffic Division to say a few words. Our officer is still recovering. The injuries were very, very severe.
Good morning. Good morning, all. Now, words can't express how we feel today as Los Angeles police officers to know that there is a gentleman out there by the neighborhood, Mr. Cole, who's very shy, that did the right thing out there. We truly believe that if he didn't do that, it would have been more injuries to not only our officer, but to the citizens that were traveling to work that day. Just tremendous effort by him using his truck to block the other traffic that was coming down there on the 5 freeway that afternoon. He gave us an opportunity as law enforcement to get in, process the scene, get our injuries, injured officers out, get the injured citizen out, and make everyone safe. So, Mr. Cole, thank you so much for what you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Colleagues, Dorian mentioned that his, the CEO of the firm, Ted Honcharic, is here, and we'd like to have him say a few words.
Please welcome.
Hello, counsel. Been in this business for 20 years, delivering fuel. Pacific Tank Lines prides itself on the safety and training it provides its employees. We probably travel over 24,000 miles every day just delivering fuel in California and Nevada, so we can circumvent the globe with the miles we put on these trucks. We're always very cautious, our drivers, of their surroundings, but it takes a heart like Dorian Cole to act as an individual, to protect the lives of others in that type of situation, and we all at Pacific Tank Lines could not be any prouder. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Thank you all.
Dorian, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, in a grateful city, I want to recognize you as a hero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's go take some photos.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Okay, I'm going to take a couple of quick items. Yes, Mr. Labons.
I just wanted to say this special man went to a special school. There's also a special guy over there. I hope you're getting it from Taft High. You know, he went to Taft right there? Kai went to Taft High School. Kai Goldberg. Say hi. Cousin. All right, good job, right there.
Anyway, Mr. Cole, thank you again. Okay, we're going to move quickly to item two. Mr. Hunt, item two. No applause, please.
This evening, we don't have enough lighting in City Hall. I think that we should have more lighting on me and more lighting on the public. I think that lighting's very important, very important. I think that lighting lights up the world. As we see it, there's not enough lighting in here.
He is not talking about the street lighting district.
We don't have enough lights on the street district, Dion. You know better than to talk when I talk.
No, you just need to stay on the subject, Mr. Hunt. That's all he's requesting.
Lighting in here, the street lighting? Come on, Mr. President, you know better to talk when I'm in here.
No, stay, you're not on the subject. Thank you very much. So, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll take item seven, called special by Mr. Sean Murphy. Item seven, Sean.
Item seven, I'm against.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twenty-one, Kevin McDonald. Item twenty-one, Kevin McDonald. Oh, then, no, we already moved that one. Now, we'll move to 28. Okay, Ms. Ramirez. I think I see you to my left, Ms. Ramirez, on item 28. Please come forward.
I say, no, this amount is unlawfully, this amount is unlawful. First of all, violence against women continues and has continued for quite a long time. LAPD, with the exception of few good law officers, LAPD has failed to protect women against violence, especially with the gangbangers and the wetbacks. Therefore, we demand that the City of Los Angeles not accept the amount of $900,000 from the United States Department of Justice office on violence against women because crimes have escalated. Therefore, it would be outright theft if the City of Los Angeles did in fact accept that kind of money. You haven't earned it, Los Angeles. I'm not saying we are now starting, just starting to make an incremental change, but ladies and gentlemen, LAPD has failed to enforce the rule of law, has failed to protect women against crimes and violence, theft and vandalism and gang stalkings. Nothing has been done to deter crimes in the City of Los Angeles, especially by LAPD. Therefore, we do not accept the money in good conscience. You do not accept that amount of money. You send it back to the Department of Justice, and you put it to the right use and give it to the right state that will in fact enforce the rule of law and help women against crimes. Therefore, again, this is a public safety issue. Please, in good conscience, this is a matter of principle, you do not take that money. It is theft. Therefore, thank you very much. God bless America and God bless the United States military. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. City Attorney, I think I want to move to item 40. We'll just move that along. So, if I could get on item 40, I have Mr. Spindler, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Hunt on item Please come forward.
Yes, thank you for not fighting this. The City of Los Angeles is guilty, guilty, guilty against everybody that sues them, just like this plaintiff is completely correct, and this city is completely wrong and racist against Koreans on every level. So, today...
You're off the subject. You're off the subject. That's one warning. The next one, I'll remove your time.
I'm going to have to go into police mode. I'm going to talk like a police officer.
Stay on the subject. That's not on the subject. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Herman followed by Mr. Hunt. Go right ahead, Mr. Herman.
Okay. Well, I'm talking about the City Council shall recess due to closed session regarding Edward D. Warren and the City of Los Angeles for the court case number BO520826 regarding a matter that involves the LAPD for Durango car falls, hip, wait. The matter involves a trip and fall incident. Ooh! Aren't you people not surprised that we have a slip and fall incident in Los Angeles when yet you racist and you discriminate against people with disability when it comes to the slip and fall incidents in Los Angeles? How dare you? How dare you? But yet, Will McCord from the Transportation Department in Sacramento is fighting my case regarding my slip and fall.
He is not talking about this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back and finish this now.
Now, regarding the matter that involves a trip and fall incident, which occurred on June 2nd, 2013, in a 1,900 block of D-U-R-A-N-G-O, for the record, Rango, near the avenues at 195, oh my God, 195, you know, it's hard to read this manuscript, but again, I got 20 seconds, and within my two minutes, Mr. Speaker, as you rattle the mic like that, it's interrupting me.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to conclude in this answer. Pay the litigation on this and attribute all costs and funds to the attorneys that you wasted their time because they were right.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on item 40, Mr. Hunt.
All right. Talking about hit and runs, right here, I'm just now getting back into all of this. As a knife circuit winner, I don't believe in any hit and runs.
This is not regarding a hit and run. So, stay on the subject, Mr. Hunt.
Slip and fall, listen, why can't intertwine it?
Stay on the subject.
It's all the same thing. So, if I slip and fall, or it's a hit and run, it should make...
You're not on the subject. Come on, Mr. Hunt, just stay on the subject, that's all.
Since you said it like that, I'll work with you, Mr. President.
Okay, now, let's prepare to that, let's prepare to vote on that. I'll have the City of Clerk read the item.
For item 40, in the case entitled Edward Diamond versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $400,000 in settlement.
Thank you. Okay, members, no applause. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, now, we're going to go to Mr., well, we will go to Mr. Walsh on item 32. Mr. Walsh on item 32.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Victory Blogging at J. Walsh Confidential, Victory Tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Check us out on Two Urban Girls. Okay, this one concerns funding a holiday party for the LAPD. We shouldn't give them it. What are they going to do? Stuff their mouth and go out in Central Division and kill a few more unarmed black people? What are you going to be serving? Black olives? What are you going to have, what are you going to do? Have a dart board, darts for drinks? I really, it doesn't, we're talking about authorization of $18,452, $53.82 for a goddamn holiday party. I mean, the cops are fat here, but are they going to eat $14,000?
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we're going to do 30, item 30. So, I know, Mr. Englander, you held this special. So, what I'm going to do is call up, we've got a few speakers on this subject. We'll start with, is Claire Latani maybe, or, and please come in, identify yourself. I know I did not pronounce that correctly.
Good morning. I'm Claire Latani. I'm with Mia Lehrer and Associates. We are landscape architects and urban designers working to make Los Angeles a healthier, safer, and more beautiful city. We support the efforts of the LADWP to extend and expand the turf replacement program with a couple of requests. Please add language and resources to protect our urban forest, which provides shade, habitat, and beauty, and please also require a watershed approach to landscape design, requesting that applicants keep rainwater on site to recharge groundwater supply, treat stormwater, provide local habitat and/or local food supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, and I think this is Mr. Herman.
Yes, sir. 30.
I am not sure. Yes, Mr. Spindler, come forward.
Yes, I went to the DWP board meeting yesterday, and that, because it was an overflow meeting room, so turf, yes, we have to have artificial turf because artificial turf saves water. We don't want children playing and growing up on a real grass lawn like I did, and we don't want people playing sports, young people playing sports on a natural grass field. We want them playing on an unnatural, artificial surface, such as natural-looking fake grass because we live in a fake city. So, it's very apropos that a bankrupt city with no water and a minimum wage that's going to destroy the economy needs to also tear all the lawns out and put in fake grass. That is just absolutely perfect for the city with no representation for anybody except the people who put in fake turf. Why are we putting in fake turf? Because there's people who donate to campaigns who put in fake turf. So, because they put in fake turf and they support campaign donations, we need to put in more fake turf. And at $3.85 a square foot, as proposed by Mayor Garcetti and his lovely DWP board, we need to tear out all of our natural lawn, starting with the south lawn of the City Hall Building. You go outside and you'll see that lovely lawn they just planted. Paul Corretts wants it torn out and replaced with artificial turf. Give Paul Corretts credit for this approach. Everybody... Coretts credit for this approach. Everybody, go out, tear out your lawns, and replace it with fake grass. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Well, such barriers in the City of Los Angeles. Even I participated with Mal Levine, the President, at the Board of Water and Power Commission yesterday because I had my overflow flown into that building there yesterday for a total of five minutes at the discretionary of the President. But in regards to turf replacement programs, there was a large amount of billions of dollars discussed on how to improve water conditions, infrastructure, and yet why are you gonna charge the people of Los Angeles double the cost for materials when you should be giving them a discount, DWP? Oh, wait. Englander and Fuentes though, but they don't care. They're from Sacramento. One of them is, the other is not. Both from the Valley, though, but they wanna stick you in the butt with these artificial programs of turf replacement, and I hold my time to one frickin' minute.
That concludes cards for this item. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Englander.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we submitted this motion because there is a great opportunity for Angelenos to step up and do the right thing and remove the turf. There's incredible landscape companies that are doing a tremendous job. As many of you know, I recently removed all the turf from my home as well. And the hardest thing in doing that, the hardest obstacle that I had in that challenge was getting my wife on board and getting her support. And once she did, in fact, support the concept, she hasn't been more thrilled, and it was such the right decision to do. And in fact, our next-door neighbor did the same thing at the same time, and it looks fantastic. It's great to know that we're saving water each and every day. It's great to know that half the water that we used in our household was outside, and now that's gone. You know, we've got rain barrels, but unfortunately, it does not rain enough. We need to do more to step up the effort to get Angelenos on board on this, to educate and inform those folks of the benefits of doing this on their own property as well. Not only that, we need to make it easier for them to access the information. And so the issue that I found in this, and that's part of this motion that I'm asking your support on, is when I put my solar on my home almost four years ago, I have full solar on my rooftop. And when I installed that, the solar company came out and said, "We need to access your DWP bills so we can do an assessment and evaluation in how much energy you use over the last year." I didn't save all my bills, pay the bill, and in fact, I'm on paperless and auto pay. So I don't get anything in the mailbox on this. It just gets paid. With that, I gave them authority to go to DWP to access my bills to do the evaluation. So on the energy side, they had that opportunity, but on the water side, the turf companies do not. And so we're asking DWP, and they've already came up with, and I'd like to ask them to step up if they could, have a seat at the table as well, walk us through how we can make it easier and much more customer service friendly for those folks to go through that process, to access the information or give authority to customers that are interested in this program. And they don't have to then wait two or three months to get another bill, to remember to hold on to it, to give it to the company for the evaluation, and they can just sign the rebate over and make it very simple for them to do it. So thank you for agreeing to work with us on this. I really appreciate it. I think customers are gonna be very happy and delighted that they'll be able to have a much smoother process in this. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, good morning, President Martinez and honorable council members. My name is Penny Falcon. I'm the manager of Water Conservation Policy, Legislation, and Grants at the Department of Water and Power, and with me is Devon Lamb. He's the supervisor of Water Conservation Policy. And I'm gonna go through a very quick PowerPoint just to provide some highlights on what we're doing with our turf removal program to address all the issues in the motion. I think you have a copy in front of you. So just to give a quick overview, we have an extensive list of conservation rebates ranging from washing machines to cooling tower controllers for both residential and commercial customers. We offer free showerheads, aerators, and pre-wrench spray nozzles. Our rebate programs that target specifically outdoor water use are our rain barrel rebates, our smart irrigation controllers, and our efficient sprinkler heads. In particular, we're really pushing our residential turf removal program that Councilmember Englander has talked about. And with 40 to 60% of residential water use going outdoors for watering, we see a huge potential in this area. So throughout the drought... there we go. Throughout the drought, DWP has been aggressively outreach-ing our conservation message and highlighting our turf removal program. We ran a Fall of 2013 campaign that focused on cash in your lawn. We advertised on TV, radio, news media, movie theaters, and social media, and we saw tenfold increase in our rebate applications as a result of that outreach. In response to the current drought, we have actually increased our budget from a typical $2 million to $4 million. Our key messages have been targeting our three days a week watering restrictions, tips on how to save water for our customers, and advertising the current rebate of $3.75 for our turf program. On April 9th, we actually launched the new Save Our Drop outreach campaign. It's a partnership with the Mayor's Office and DWP, and our outreach materials are gonna again include PSA's and other advertising. So to continue encouraging our residents to switch over to California-friendly landscape, we provide a variety of landscaping resources. The picture on the upper left talks about our free three-hour training class that provides information to our customers and advises them on how to transform their lawns into California-friendly landscaping. The picture on the upper center is an actual hands-on workshop where customers actually do this work at their home. They learn how to remove the turf. They do grading to capture storm water and rainwater, and they provide mulching and install a rain garden or a rain barrel. And the picture on the upper right is a new California-friendly landscape website that we just launched. It contains a landscaping design template that's shown in the bottom picture there. And it also has hundreds and thousands of plant options that are California-friendly and low-water-using for our customers. We are continuing to evaluate the needs of this program as it expands. We're looking... we are actually working with local nurseries to ensure that the California-friendly plants are available to them. We're also working with our Metropolitan Water District to develop California-friendly design classes for our landscapers and gardeners. So thanks to our turf removal outreach activities, our customer interest in our California-friendly landscape incentive has surged. This graph shows the number of unique visitors to our California-friendly webpage. Website traffic has increased as shown on this graph by 2,000% this year compared to 1213 fiscal year, and that's as a result of our big outreach. Reggie. There we go. We have multiple dedicated teams to implement LADWP's water conservation program. We have our Water Conservation Response Unit that you see here on the top of this picture that's in charge of enforcing our ordinance water restrictions. We also have our Water Conservation Group which oversees our rebate and incentive programs. The team collaborates with MWD on joint rebate programs and administers our in-house technical assistance rebate program. In light of the severe drought and the increased customer interest in all of our programs, we are adding staff to both of these teams. We continue to work, as Councilmember Englander had talked about, to streamline our rebate process. One of our key areas is working with the Metropolitan Water District contractor that does the processing for our turf removal rebates. We are also looking to simplify the application process that currently requires a copy of the customer bills, especially to assist these vendor-specific rebates. We're aiming for a balanced approach. We have already started outreach to the vendors to prevent potential fraud issues and keep the process cost-effective while providing good customer service. This graph shows the annual turf removed for our residential turf program since it started in 2009. To encourage increased customer participation, throughout the years, we've actually been increasing our rebates. We initially started out at $1 in 2009, increased it in 2013 to $2, and currently, we are at $3.75. The light green bars are gonna show you the annual rebate numbers, turf remove numbers, and the dark green are gonna show you our cumulative turf remove numbers. So last fiscal year, we set a record and removed 1.8 million square feet of turf. This year, we've already set a new record, and we're currently at 5.5 million eight square feet of turf removed. To date, our customers have replaced about 15 million square feet. So similar to our success and the big growth we've seen, Metropolitan Water District and all of Southern California has seen a huge increase in this turf rebate applications. As a result, the Metropolitan Water Board is considering some modifications to the program to ensure ongoing ability to fund this program into the future. LADWP is working closely with Met staff on a solution that maintains the program viability while supporting our customer needs. So this is the last slide. It actually shows our progress tracking to the Mayor's Executive Directive goals. It's comparing our baseline GPCD that we started at 131 for the mayor, and we're on target to get to the 117 gallons per capita per day. And a large part of this is to the success of our turf program. And just for highlighting, the blue graphs on the left is kinda where we started with our gallons per capita per day. And in 20 years, we went from 187 down to 156. During the last drought, we dropped an additional 15 points of gallons per capita per day in just seven years. Our current track of the mayor's goal is looking for us to drop another 27 points by January of 2017. Although this is an aggressive goal, we're working very hard towards meeting that goal in combination with all of our programs. And I just wanna leave you with a view and a vision for what California-friendly landscape can really be. So by removing your turf, you can have beautiful landscape that's water-efficient and sustainable in our area. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation as well and all your efforts on this. As we can see, the program clearly works. And if you could just address the last point of customers having the ability to grant access to the various vendors out there in the space as well to make that process easier and a little more friendly to them as well.
Well, I'm currently working through that with the vendors, trying to identify exactly where any holdups or delays in the rebate processing is occurring.
Well, it's not in the rebate processing.
Well, it-
The consultation.
Right. So currently, the way the process works is the customer logs on for the online application. If the vendor's gonna do it, the customer signs over a form that authorizes the vendor to do that for them. But the customer needs to provide the vendor a copy of their bill. And what I talked to you about is trying to get that copy, because a lot of people, if they're paperless, they don't have that copy. They need to log in and print a copy. So what I'm currently working on, and I don't have all the answers yet today, but I'm working towards it, is to try and be able to find and get that copy as easily and quickly as possible. And so that's what I'm gonna be working with the vendors on, a solution for that, and a way for them to get that copy and not hold up ultimately the transformation into California-friendly.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you very much for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing this item forward. First of all, I'm a little nervous about what's going on at the Metropolitan Water District, and you addressed it in a very polite way and said you're working with staff. What's really going on, and I hope the media will pay attention to this, because this is going to be a vote next week, staff is actually trying to lead the Metropolitan Water District in a direction of largely decimating their contribution to this program. The LA delegation is fighting hard to try and avoid that. And so we want the folks in Orange County and San Diego to know that their board members are thinking about eviscerating this program at the absolute wrong time, in the middle of the worst drought we will probably ever see in our lifetimes. So we are fighting that, and it's a possibility that we will not have the kind of support that we've had from the Metropolitan Water District in the future. So everyone should know that. I also wanna make sure, and I'm glad to hear, that we are trying to point people in the more environmentally sustainable directions on this and not just have them rip out their lawn and replace it with something that's not as good as it could be. But I would like us to reformulate this program a little bit and make it more difficult for people to replace their lawns with artificial turf and make it more difficult for people to replace their lawns with just rocks because we're creating a heat island effect. We're contributing to global warming and some of the problems that we're seeing as a result, including this drought. Also, grading properly, as you noted, will help us capture storm water. We have an $8 billion storm water responsibility, and everything we can do to reduce the amount of storm water, and the level of pollution of that storm water will help us. So that's obviously a step in the right direction. And we have our pollinators, bees and butterflies dying off in record numbers elsewhere in the world, and doing pretty well in Los Angeles. And if we can encourage people to use native plants, obviously, we'll do more environmentally. So as long as we're doing this and we're giving people pretty good incentives, if we can try and steer away from the least environmental practices and push them towards the most environmental practices, we'll get a lot more out of our program and a lot better bang for the buck. So I would encourage us to look at that. And I don't know if we've looked at making that a little more mandatory rather than just encouraging people to do some of the best practices, whether we're encouraging them to do all of the best practices and whether we can steer this in such a direction that artificial turf and other things that are clearly problematic won't be part of the program at some point.
Now, you make some very good suggestions. That's why all of our hands-on workshops really focus on exactly what you talked about, the storm water capture and using more California natives. Our new website actually identifies the natives and those plants, even though they're not native, that are habitat-friendly and do help the hummingbirds and the bees and even the other wildlife. With regards to artificial turf, we don't have a huge uptick or, you know, a huge demand for that part of our rebate. It's there to provide the option to the customers when it's put in a place, you know, where they need some kind of surface like that for playing or doing some kind of activity on, or it's a pathway moving from one point to another. But we don't see a lot of use on it. It is, you know, quite expensive for them to do. Doing the California-friendly is much more cost-effective for them, and it's much more beautiful, so.
And we've certainly seen a lot of people doing rocks, and I don't think there's an awareness that that's less environmentally friendly.
Absolutely.
Or the astroturf, or artificial turf. The cost may discourage people in that regard. The rocks, not that expensive either, so I have seen a fair amount of that. And if we can at least discourage people and let them know-
Absolutely.
-this is a bad practice, if not, you know, eliminate it entirely, which I wouldn't mind, but at least let them know they're doing a certain amount of environmental harm with the good. I think that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. We can add the best practices to our website, too.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Labonte?
Well, I just wanted to stand for artificial turf for athletes. And I don't know if you have any record of our Los Angeles Unified School District or other schools. Many of their sports fields have gone to artificial turf. Do you have any record of that?
Only if they came through and got a rebate from us.
But you have the records of how much water they used-
Yes.
...when they were turf and how much they don't now. I think-
Correct.
It is a huge saver.
It is a huge saver.
Yeah.
Going to artificial turf is a huge saver. Now, they do still need to throw some water on for cooling and for health reasons, but it's a big water saver compared to regular turf.
Absolutely. And then also, I just wanted to rise and thank the Department of Water Power. It's so important. Information is knowledge is power. We have to inform everyone on this issue here that's just so critical on that. I remember the late, great Kenny Hahn on Jefferson Boulevard put artificial turf on like 30 years ago or more, and he was criticized for artificial turf. I think it's gonna be difficult, and I know public... have you met with Public Works on their public right-of-ways at all yet?
Yes, we are working with them.
And have you met with them to talk about the public right-of-ways, like on San Vicente or on Highland Avenue or on Vermont Avenue or Hillhurst Avenue specifically?
No, not on those specific projects, just on development of standards for parkways with Bureau of Land-
I got it. But I think that's a big issue because I think there is some beauty to green. I know we all wanna go brown, and I love the governor, but there is some beauty to that from a public space that is real important to have something. And reclaim water is another asset that you must maximize more in whatever that you do on this.
And we're looking at storm water capture for some of those areas, too.
Yeah, but it doesn't storm enough. So but it does... the terrorists do flush every day, but they don't. So you gotta figure that out, work with sanitation. Let me ask you another question. Sometimes in the past history of our city, there's been campaigns where we kept note of things. Would we ever wanna go by zip code and let people know zip code number 39 has reduced its water consumption by 22% and zip code 19 has reduced it by 32% or just to get public awareness? Because we're all in this battle together.
No, I agree. We are looking at ways right now to communicate to the public now that the State Water Resource Control Board has mandated percent reductions. LA has received a 16% reduction in water use. We wanna communicate that to all the citizens of LA-
Right.
...and let them know how we're doing. Initially, we're looking at a big bucket. I think we can look at having some- I think we can look at having some competition by zip code or by areas of the city, too.
Make sure it's positive, talk it out real good.
Absolutely.
The other thing I do want to say, the Central Valley of California is the most important part of this state. Where water flows, food grows. And I just hope we look for ways to get more water back, including desaline from the central coast into, and I don't know, Mr. Corretts, how you feel about that? You're our MTA, excuse me, MWD, Metropolitan Water District Representative on that. But I just want to be a loud voice for the farmers and for the economics of California because things could happen where all those jobs could go away and they could all fly it in like they do the flowers now that used to be grown in Ventura County into LAX from Ecuador. I just want to make a point, where are we on desalinization?
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Labonte, this is outside the scope of this agenda description.
It's water. It's water. Call your office, Mr. City Attorney. It's water.
I also want to remind you, Mr. Labonte, of your time.
Okay, good. It's water, Mr. City Attorney. Please look at that and let me know. Thank you very much. I'm shocked, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Mr. Blumanfield?
Thank you. Do I so much have a question, a couple of comments? First, I really want to thank the authors of this, Mr. Englander, Mr. Puentez, for bringing this forward. I'm a big proponent of turf replacement and doing everything we can. We're seeing it happen, certainly in the San Fernando Valley. I'm just, you know, we're getting to that point, maybe we get to that tipping point. I wanted to weigh in on a couple of things. The artificial turf conversation, I want to make a note that your office and David Chico has been working with me ever since I did that motion a couple of months ago about looking at the environmental standards for artificial turf. Because we use this broad stroke, but not all artificial turf was created equal. There is differences, there are standards. Some are more permeable, some have the crumb rubber that potentially could be problematic. So, we shouldn't have such a broad brush on it. There is some of it that is better than others. I want to, Penny especially, thank you. You have been doing just amazing work and collaborating with me and my team. We're putting together a demonstration project in the West Valley, 20,000 square feet in the municipal building that is being done right now that is going to be a model for many to see. We'll not only have different types of turf as we've described, but we'll have signage so that people can know where to go to get that material. It's the type of innovative work that you're already doing. And the city has been doing a lot. I had a motion a number of months ago with Wreckin' Parks to replace any sort of turf that's not used for, you know, active recreation with turf replacement. So we're moving in a really good direction as a city. And I also want to particularly mention, this June 4th coming up, another partnership, we're having an education at the West Valley Municipal Library. So, anyone who wants to have more discussion about this kind of thing, DWP, the library, a partnership, 6:00 PM, June 4th, it's in Reseda. It's another way to check out and understand and learn more about it. But I'm just really pleased with the work that you're doing and I want to encourage continuation and know that you have a lot of partners, myself included, who really want to do everything we can to support the good work you're doing and to expand it exponentially. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumanfield. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I too appreciate the presentation. This is obviously an area that we're going to have to be more aggressive, more resourceful in. And while some parts of town have really adopted this, I'm concerned that other parts are a little slower catching on, particularly my part of the community. And so had, I wanted to make sure that we're working closely, not just with residents, but with some of the small businesses, the gardeners that are being impacted. I know you mentioned that there was some kind of a training program. Could you talk about that again and how the council offices can partner with you to do some outreach to small businesses, the gardeners, the landscape businesses in the district as an extra push? And then the last question, we know there's a great demand on these funds, pressures from Metro and others. Are the funds available on a first come, first served basis? How do we make sure that, you know, one part of town doesn't suck up all the resources before other parts of town are able to apply?
So, with your first question on the outreach to the gardeners, we actually partner with Metropolitan Water District, who's the wholesaler. They operate this program. They also provide a certain amount of training classes. They have a contract with a consultant that does the training classes. We're working with Metropolitan on developing a training class that, you know, currently the class focuses on customers and residents that are doing the transition, but we are looking at developing a class with Metropolitan targeted towards our gardeners and landscapers. We also work with organizations like the Certified Landscapers Association, with the Irrigation Association, on how we can provide training, certification and outreach for all of this California-friendly landscaping. It's not just the landscaping itself and the plant materials, but it's also transitioning irrigation to drip irrigation, which is something new for a lot of this industry also. I actually work on a state panel with the Department of Water Resources and we are discussing this very item, the Model Landscape Ordinance statewide and on how to better outreach and train everybody. So, it's something that everybody's aware of. This is a fairly new program. There's a lot of learning to do. And any way that we can partner with you, with our local groups, that would be fantastic. Our Water Conservation Response Unit that goes out and patrols the area and talks and enforces our ordinance and our watering restrictions, they actually are our first line of interaction with our landscapers and gardeners in all the different areas. When they come across and meet the gardeners, they go out and they talk to them and educate them on what the requirements are. Absolutely not.
They aren't members of the association or the organization.
I, we're well aware of that.
We've got mom and pop gardeners, too.
Exactly.
And they need to make sure that we're inclusive, including them to the extent we can.
Yeah, they're our hardest-to-reach sector on this.
Well, again, I certainly want to offer our office, our district office, as a resource in South LA because that's something we're very concerned about, making sure we do connect with those who ordinarily are left out.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And on your second question on making sure funding, it is basically on a first come, first served, but Metropolitan and LA DWP have been adding additional funding to make sure these programs stay viable during this drought. So typically, we adjust annual budgets to account for that. And with regards to ensuring that these programs are available to everybody, our outreach and education is citywide and our tracking of participation has been citywide. We've got participants in every area of the city, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no more speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item passes. We're going to go to presentations. Mr. Bonin, are you ready?
Hello. Hi, good.
Devin.
Good morning, colleagues. I'm pleased to have a great presentation to make today. We've all heard of the digital divide. And when we hear that term, we think about divisions in terms of internet access or technological access for people based on income or by neighborhood. There's also a digital divide based on disability. And today, I have the honor of presenting a certificate and honoring here at this council someone who has been drawing attention to that issue and actually doing something about it. I'm joined as part of this by Steve Simon from our Department of Disability, as well as Richard Ray, also from our Department of Disability. And we're here to celebrate Global Accessibility Awareness Day and to thank a Venice-based tech developer, Joe Devon, who's behind me, and thank him for getting people talking, thinking and learning about digital accessibility and help people with disabilities access technology. The idea behind hosting a Global Accessibility Awareness Day started with a single blog post by Joe. And in it, he wrote that it's more important to make a site accessible than pretty for older browsers. For some people, an accessible internet literally makes a world of difference. Joe's post was seen by Jennifer Assanchin, an accessibility professional from Toronto. And after reading it, she immediately contacted Joe and they joined forces and they decided to leverage their extensive and respective networks to do something about it. The purpose of Global Accessibility Awareness Day is to ensure that as our society transitions rapidly towards technology, that no one is left behind regardless of ability or disability. Imagine trying to use the website or tech tools we rely on every day without being able to use a mouse or a trackpad, or without being able to read the sometimes tiny text on many websites, or without being able to hear a video, or without being able to distinguish between contrasting colors, or without being able to see at all. These are the challenges that are facing millions of vision and hearing impaired people around the world every single day. And Global Accessibility Awareness Day was created to inform and to encourage the many tech developers we have here in Los Angeles and around the country and the world to think about how they can give someone who's disabled the same technology experience as everyone else. The promise of innovation that's growing in this city and in Silicon Beach in particular is one of unparalleled excitement and opportunity, but that promise and that potential can't exist, it can't be exclusive and can't forget or omit those who cannot see or cannot hear or cannot touch or otherwise participate in technology because of a disability. Joe, where is Joe? Is working to make sure that tech developers always have the disabled community on their mind and try to make technology work for everybody. So, it's my pleasure to present him today with the certificate recognizing Global Accessibility Awareness Day. And thank you for all your efforts and ask you to say a few words.
Great. Thank you very much. Basically, I created this day. I didn't really expect anything much to come of it. It was just a blog post. But as a result of the tech community really embracing it, we have over 40 events happening tomorrow. One of them will be tomorrow at 7:00 PM at Yahoo if anybody would like to come and join us. And this day has really made a difference in so many ways. Corporations around the world have embraced it and really worked on improving their accessibility. I believe I only have two minutes. I would also like to have Ismael Herrera come up and just say a few words about why accessibility is important.
Well, thank you so much for allowing me to come before you. I do want to express my encouragement for the development of accessibility for most of us who have a disability, who have been able to overcome a lot of obstacles and who are able to participate in our community freely and restrictively in our daily lives and even to the point of becoming taxpayers and contribute to society as a whole. Thank you for this opportunity and we look forward to seeing you and having you guys, every single one of you in this room, participate with us down the road. Thank you again.
Steve Simon, Department on Disability. I just wanted to quickly say thank you, of course, to Councilmember Bonin and of course, Councilmember Blumanfield, I think had a hand in this as well. This is an extraordinarily, extraordinarily important awareness day that's going to make a difference for our communities. Of course, Joe Devon, thank you so much. It's a very simple idea with huge ramifications. The Department on Disability has already begun working with all city departments on trying to make all of our documents that go onto our websites accessible. It's going to take a long time. It's a Herculean task, but we're moving forward with it. It's a big step for us becoming the most accessible technology city in America. So I want to just have Richard Ray, my Technology Access Coordinator, tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, Mr. Bonin, and thanks to all of you. Clearly, now, as you know, technology is in a rapid growth stage, radical new growths that are based on core technologies that can be applied specifically for all people, including those with disabilities. People with disabilities are using instant messaging, SMS, and video conferencing and all sorts of things that we use every day as represented by the smartphone. The technology is actually allowing people with disabilities to merge into society. The Department of Disability is, of course, pleased to be involved in these efforts to improve accessibility through technology. We are directly supporting the website accessibility here in the city as well as participating in the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC's committees. Personally, I am Chair of the Emergency Communications Subcommittee under the FCC's Disability Advisory Committee. We are working specifically regarding the implementation of the 21st Century Communications and Video Programming Accessibility Act, which was passed by Congress. And this is to update the communications protection for people with disabilities. I'm very pleased to be focusing our efforts to ensure that people with disabilities have accessibility to emergency information, just as other people do, especially with the evolution of the next-generation 911 systems and making sure that people have information accessible through the television. So I'd like to thank all of you here in the Los Angeles City Council for your continued support and we look forward to collaborating with everybody like Mr. Devon, Mr. Bonin, and each one of you. We truly can make the city of Los Angeles and city government accessible for all people across Los Angeles with technology leading the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Clerk, we're going to go to item 22.
Item 22 called Special for Cards.
Speaker is Antonio Ramirez, item 22. Ms. Ramirez, are you here?
One moment. 22, you said? Goodness gracious. Sorry. I wish we had a little more time to go over a couple of things. First of all, in terms of 22, the city clerk, I would hope that you reopen the city clerk's office on the third floor, which is the gateway to the city staff and the constituents. And that's Carol and Mike who are phenomenal.
She is not talking about this item.
I'm sorry?
Ma'am, you're not talking about this item?
You said 22, right?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I just wanted to start off with that.
Okay.
Anyway, I thought that was an important example of the city's, you know, performance.
I understand that, ma'am, but we really need to stick to the item.
Yes, we certainly want to do that. But anyway, having said that, I think this was important. But again, I want to thank you. Bring back the city clerk's office.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Mr. Herman.
Another gutting of a business improvement district regarding subject for approval of the mayor. Petition submitted on behalf of not you constituents, but rather on behalf of all parcels that will have a special benefit conferred upon them, whatever. And in accordance with Article X111D of the California Constitution, based on the facts and conditions of consignment attached engineer's report, I find it bogus. I demand an investigation, an audit on this report. I find it frugalous. Oh, I'm sorry, crucorian frugalibilous. Because, again, I'm criticized because I speak like a funny person for one minute and now my feelings are hurt, you jerk.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. There are no more cards, Mr. Clerk, on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Labonte has requested for this item to go forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Next item, item 23.
Item 23 called Special for Cards.
First speaker, Antonio Ramirez, on item 23.
In terms of consideration relative to the formation of Los Angeles Tourism Marketing District, we need people who have traveled and who have been from staying in the posh hotels to homelessness. We need somebody who can encapsulate both worlds in order to better serve the tourists. And we want to start by first disinfecting Los Angeles. Clean up Los Angeles. It's everywhere you go in Los Angeles smells like urine, vomit, and God knows what else. Start bleaching and Lysol the entire city. Then we can talk about starting a Los Angeles Tourism Market District. Okay? Let's clean up LA. It stinks. And then after that, I've met some lovely tourists from Australia when I was checking into a hotel and they said, my goodness, at the airport, nobody offered us coffee. People are so cold and rude and nasty. Are they usually that way? I said, no, not really. In Los Angeles, we've got some wonderful perky people, some with zest and zaniness, like our pilots and military, but then you deal with the stuffy smug asses, you know?
So she is not talking about this business improvement district.
Excuse me, could you, I'm sorry.
No, we're on item 23.
Anyway, city attorney, I wish you would be a little more clear. Anyway, what we need is to provide hospitality. First, clean LA and let's provide hospitality and show the world that we are serviceable, that we can help and keep our tourists safe. We must protect all our tourists, whoever they are, wherever they come from. Let us provide an environment of hospitality, serviceability, customer service, and safety and protection for them as well. Please, let's clean up LA, get rid of the gangs and the wetbacks, hasta la vista cabrones, and bring in the tourists and the pilots and military. Thank you very much. God bless America.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems or at Two Urban Girls. This is a very important tourism marketing district. 100% in favor of this and what better day to say to every Asian on the planet that the citizens of Los Angeles, the voters, proudly elected a Korean-American for the first time.
He is not talking about this item.
Tourism. That's a tourism issue. We want Korean tourism. So shut your mouth, Mr. City Attorney. She's running the meeting, not you. We want every.
Mr. Walsh, we need, Mr. Walsh?
Come to LA and see that we now have. Hollywood Highlands dot org.
Next, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Next speaker, Eric Previn.
Good morning, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn, a resident from Studio City, Council District 2. And this is a very interesting item. This has to do with, as Mr. City Attorney pointed out, a tourism district for, basically it's collecting money, assessments from hotels, it's for hotels in particular with 50 rooms or more. And the idea is to then redeploy that money in a way that can be considered marketing, so like advertising almost, for those various hotels. So this is very hotel-friendly piece of business and obviously the hotels would be appreciative of that. I looked at it because it was nestled in a couple of items in the agenda, one of which had a $5,000 kind of little fee. But the reality is, is that we are facing, I looked at this particular district, if I'm not mistaken, there's over $22 million in this field of collection and that we then redeploy that money appropriately. I, you know, I can say that one item embedded in it is item number H, which says that the money should not be used to provide improvements or activities outside the district or any other purpose other than those described in the management district plan. Now, that raises a question because tourism here in Los Angeles, I don't have to tell this group, is going through the roof. Mr. Blumenfield, that was a very exciting presentation with 251 million visitors, if I'm not mistaken, was it last week? We heard, I mean, this is really a robust time for that group. So I guess the question is, do they need the help versus the other numbers that came out that there were 12% increase in our homeless population here in Los Angeles? And obviously, I don't think we want to advertise our homelessness to tourists, but it did occur to me, there are certain kinds of vacations that people do, not like the vacation of surplus property that we're doing later at item number eight, which I'll get to, but where folks could come and perhaps contribute, or perhaps some of that 22 million could be used for that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, your time is up. Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
We're going to be able to have you bring in all the tourists possible, right, Mr. Labange? So that all, Mr. Labange, will know is that the tourism in Los Angeles will improve because we, the taxpayers, brought this great motion before you, council, to delegate on behalf of all the Koreans, all Japanese Americans, and all the Asian-Americans who are flooding in here in tourism events, especially the Special Olympics. Rue, rue, rue. So I'm not going to delegate here too much time. This is about tourism. It's true, anywhere you come off in a public area smells like urine because the city council does not provide a budget to clean all the cagada y urinar, pee-pee on the sidewalks, Mrs. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next speaker, Mike Go Hunt.
I really want to hit on this issue right here, tourism, tourism. Walking down Venice Beach, watching the police beat niggers, that's bad tourism. Venice Beach is the second largest tourist city in the United States and the tourists are watching people get shot. Why is that? Chief Charlie Beck says it's all right. I'm not going to change the policy. I want to see those niggers and the tourists watch the niggers get shot and beat because it's mentally ill. People from Venice, it's the second largest city in the United States, have tourism. And LAPD is killing, genociding against the blacks and the African-Americans. They beat them and the tourists is watching this every fucking day because Mike Bonin is racist and that's the damn truth.
This is regarding a business improvement district?
This is what our tourism is watching. Whether you believe it or not, it's on TV, it's on the news, it's everywhere. Now say Venice is not the second largest city in tourism and they're watching this every day. African-Americans, Mike Bonin is behind all this because you guys shoot niggers and African-Americans and the tourists is watching you guys.
Next speaker, Mr. Wayne Spindler.
It's not safe to come here, tourists. So we need the Anti-Visitors Bureau of Los Angeles for the tourists to know they're in danger as soon as they enter the 417-mile city limits of the LAPD racist killer-run Los Angeles tourist terrorist city. Because if you want tourist terrorism, you've come to the right place. In LA, you are a tourist, you get to see Neanderthals in uniforms beat and malign people because they're homeless. If you want to do that, come here, but if you want to be civilized as a tourist, don't come to this city, it's extremely dangerous. Just take a look at the people speaking here. Even the Klan are trying to protect the tourists. Now they've got to come and protect the tourists from the police.
Mr. Clerk, there are no more cards on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Mr. Alcala, please sit down. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
This vote and passes, fourth with for Mr. Labange. Thank you very much. Next item, item 31.
Item 31 called special for cards.
We're filed this card, they're out of time, for Mr. Antonio Ramirez. There are no more cards for item 31. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item passes. Next item, item 38. Mr. Herman is now out of time, we're going to file his card for item 38. There are no more cards for item 38. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk. We're going to go to item 19. This item was called special by Mr. Corretts.
And pardon me, Councilmember, there is an amending motion, 19A, that has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Well, thank you, Madam President and colleagues. This is a great day because today we are going to preserve and save Norm's La Cienega, one of the most vital, fun, and architecturally significant properties in all of this city. Cultural monument status was given to Norm's La Cienega by the Cultural Heritage Commission and Plum, which both voted unanimously for this. We've had a community outpouring the likes of which we've rarely seen. In fact, the president of the Cultural Heritage Commission said in his 10 years on the board, he's never seen a public reaction on this scale. This is a memorable structure and sign, giving us one of the best and last remaining examples of Googie architecture and post-war architecture, illustrating the daring vision and drive of Los Angeles. I want to emphasize this is a home away from home for many people who eat there several times a week and have for decades. It's a place of employment for people that have worked there as long as 30 or 40 years. It has probably the most diverse customer base from small children and senior citizens to rock and rollers. It's really not just culturally significant, but culturally uniting. We've lost places like this recently, like Jan's Restaurant, which is actually not far away from there, which has opened for many decades and not, but not as culturally significant in terms of the architecture. We lost Twain's in the San Fernando Valley. We're losing other places and we're down to the few and this is perhaps the most glorious example of what we have left. And they make money, they draw customers, they still do well. Now, could the property owner wring a few more dollars out of that property from someone else? Yes, they probably could. And honestly, I think that was their original intention, but the property owner is now working with us and trying to work with Norm's to find a way to not just preserve this building, which is all we can technically do in our purview, but to also preserve the business as well. So we're all working together. I think this is going to work out, I'm certainly cautiously optimistic. But it's very important that we, as this building will have to be revitalized and is not in perfect condition right now, it's gotten a little old and decrepit. I think it's important that the council specify the unique Googie architectural style and elements of this building that are the focus of its designation, so those elements will be given specific attention and definitely preserved when any new application is submitted. So I ask that the council's action be amended to direct staff to specify in the designation that the Googie features on the Norm's La Cienega buildings, west and south-facing facades, are primary elements of the building that this designation is intended to protect. These are the building elements that are visible on La Cienega and that the community and visitors from around the world have come to associate with Norm's La Cienega and this important and increasingly rare style of architecture. So I ask for an eye vote on this item and on the amendment and let's preserve a key part of Los Angeles history.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. We're going to move on to speaker cards. Mike Colonna. Mike Colonna.
My name is Mike Colonna. I'm the president of Norm's Restaurants LLC. We are the restaurant company. Simple thanks to the Cultural Heritage Commission, to Conservancy, to all the city council members taking this topic up during a very busy time period, and special thanks to city council member Paul Corretts. Lastly, I want to thank the Norm's team that has been working at the restaurant for many years, under difficult conditions and with uncertainty, as well as thanking the community for supporting Norm's for over 75 years. We are 100% in support for the approval of the La Cienega location. Being originally born and raised in Boston, Massachusetts, and living the last 25 or so years, both in California, both in San Francisco, as well as now a resident of the greater Los Angeles area, I realize that it's sometimes difficult to balance maintaining the heritage, the history, which all evolves to the culture of a society. That balance is difficult sometimes because you're looking forward to the future and the future development of communities and the city as a whole. I firmly believe that this balance can be met. This approval will continue to allow us the opportunity to discuss and negotiate with the property owner. As Councilmember Corretts has just mentioned, we are also enthusiastically but cautiously optimistic that the intent of everyone is not only to maintain a building which truly signifies some of the great architects that was born and raised in this market, but also a small business that can continue to serve the community in a long period of time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Labange?
Sir, what was Norm's last name? Norm's last name?
Pardon me?
The original Norm. What was his last name?
Norm, Brittany Barker.
Brittany Barker, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And that was family-owned and operated for over 65 years.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, Adrian Scott Fine.
Adrian Scott Fine, Director of Advocacy for the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy brought forward and initiated the application to make Norm's a historic cultural monument. We certainly applaud Councilman Corretts' leadership on this, it's been very important. As mentioned, this has been one of the most vocal outpouring of support for a place in Los Angeles. It's kind of already a landmark in the city, now we just need to make it an official landmark as a historic cultural monument. It's important certainly for its architecture and its cultural significance and the Googie elements are certainly some of the things that draw people into the building, both exterior as well as interior elements. It's one of the most intact, the most intact of the norms that exist in the city, so we certainly applaud the efforts that have taken us to this point and encourage you to help get us over the finish line and designate Norm's. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean is our next speaker.
Yeah, Norms should be saved. We lost too many restaurants already. Giants was gone. Carnation was gone.
Next speaker, next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Yes, everybody knows, even though Norm's, the structure is going to be saved, it's going to go out of business because they have to pay that expensive minimum wage in five years. So the building will be there, the sign will be there, and the memories will be there. Thanks for the memories. At Norm's, you gave us food, but now there's no more jobs. In five years, you're going to pay $15 an hour and close the business forever. Thanks for the memories for Norm's of all the cheap food and all the discount prices because you could pay minimum wage, but it's going to die in five years when you pay 15. See, they don't want to talk to me about it.
He is not talking about that.
And Norm's, the building will live, but everything else will perish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Juan Alcala. Thank you, next speaker, Juan Akala.
Yes, I remember going to Norm's La Cienega when I was in a still, homeless in Hollywood. I would scoot myself down on a scooter, and you know what? Cool people would feed me over there. Some people would even say, "Come on in, 'cause you're shivering out in the cold. You're a homeless little idiot that needs to be fed." And guess what? People did buy me a steak dinner or two. I've been begging the owner here to give me a free meal, but he won't. Who needs... Anyway, this is the same thing that I've been talking about, real estate is out of control. You cannot save this city if you keep letting the real estate people run it to the ground. Nobody can afford a place to live. Nobody can afford a place to eat. Yes, city attorneys look...
He is not talking about this item.
And you always think you know what's going on, but we are talking about Norm's. We wanna save Norm's, but we wanna save the people. We wanna save the people from City Hall, increasing everything on us. So, you're gonna increase the minimum wage...
He is not talking about this item.
Talking about Norm's and what the other speaker was talking about. The employees will not be able to be paid.
That is not the subject, sir, just stick to the subject.
...that you need to stop, and you need to stop it through real estate. The real estate laws must be changed to accommodate everybody in the city, not just the city attorney and his limo and his nice house and his... Ah, go to hell, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Akala. Mr. Herman, you're out of time, so I'm gonna file your card for this item. Mr. Clerk, there are no more cards on item nineteen. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, item thirty-five.
Item thirty-five called special for cards.
We obviously need a fire department that is efficiently run and that has all the modern conveniences like cameras and things like that. We need a more efficient fire department, 'cause they go around the city picking up homeless people that have fainted for lack of services. They also have the duty to go and talk to homeless people that are pissing on the street.
Sir, we need you to stick to item thirty-five.
The fire department needs whatever they can get because they are the only ones that are really doing a service to the community. The cops are going out there and beating up people, but the fire department, I never heard of a fireman beating up on somebody.
He's not talking about this item.
I am talking about the fire department and the way it should be run. We should not, we should have cameras there, just like we should have cameras on all the policemen that are trying to lie to everybody, and they cannot get away with it. Cameras for everybody.
Sir, one more warning, you're not on the subject. Please talk about subject, item thirty-five is what you signed up for.
Fire department and their cameras, yeah, they do need cameras. Everybody needs cameras, yeah, that's the item.
Great, thank you very much. The next speaker is out of time, Antonio Ramirez, we're gonna file your card on item thirty-five. There are no more cards, Mr. Clerk, on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. Clerk, we're gonna move on to item nine.
Item nine called special for cards.
Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, today is the day when the budget is brought to council for the purpose of taking public comment in council. We will not be acting on the budget today. The process is that it will come back tomorrow for consideration and vote. We will also be taking up any motions at that time, any budget motions. I would encourage all members, if you do have budget motions, after reviewing the report that's before you, please submit them today if at all possible. You can submit them to the CLA, and we'll have a packet of motions then that will be ready to be considered tomorrow and we'll be able to operate very efficiently. I just do want to say that the Budget and Finance Committee conducted three weeks of budget hearings to arrive at the report that you have before you today. We spent over forty hours in hearings. We heard from and reviewed the budgets of forty-four different city departments and programs. We received over a hundred public comments. We incorporated in our process presentations by the Neighborhood Council budget advocates, as well as the Coalition of LA City Unions, who had a seat at the table for input into the budget recommendations you have before you. We considered a hundred reports back and memos relating to requests that committee members have had. And so, the result of all that work is that you have before you now an eight-point-five-seven billion-dollar budget with a reserve fund of over three-hundred-and-thirteen million dollars, the largest reserve fund in the history of the city of Los Angeles, in addition to a budget stabilization fund of nearly a hundred million dollars, ninety-one-point-nine million dollars. So, we've come a long way. I anticipate that tomorrow, when we take up the budget, it will be smoother than some in years past have been, but that's largely up to the discussion that we'll all have collectively. So, again, if you have motions, I would encourage you, get them in today, please, to the CLA, and we'll be able to get through this process very quickly. So, with that, Madam President, we'll be taking public comment. We will, again, members, we will not take any actions today. Tomorrow, we'll take up motions, and just so you know, any motion that relates to adding positions, whether funded or unfunded, or that has a general fund impact, will be referred back for further consideration by Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. I'm gonna call the three first speakers on this item, Liz Adman, Vera DePozzo, and Eric
My name is Liz Amson, I'm with the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. As a budget advocate, I've had a real crash course on city finances these past few months, and I want to thank the city staff and all of you for your graciousness in contributing to this process of creating this year's white paper. The budget advocates' recommendations this year were to redefine our city's budget process in order to make forward-looking decisions, to improve our infrastructure at all levels, streamline hiring, and improve collections efficiencies. And we really must look to the future, change the system so we can fix our water mains for X millions of dollars today, so that they don't break for forty or fifty, so that they don't break for forty or fifty years, rather than pay a quarter of that amount to patch them this year and fix them next year and every year thereafter. We need a realistic, balanced, five-year budget and concrete ten- and thirty- and forty-year plans. We need to build, being proactive into our budgets, so we can really become a city of the future for our children. Yesterday, you showed you understand the importance of investing in our future by increasing the minimum wage. I'm counting on you to think outside the box some more. I'm here to talk about fiscal responsibility, budgetary sustainability, but sustainability is also about the land, the environment, our taxes, the air, gentrification, development, healthcare, water, et cetera. Chief Seattle said, "This we know. The earth does not belong to man, man belongs to the earth. All things are connected like the blood that unites us all. Man did not weave the web of life, he's merely a strand in it," pointing out, "You can't have one part of our life, our universe, without the others." A lot of people think numbers are boring, they are not. They're a creative tool, through them, the city can become sustainable. We can take what we already have and make it be enough for us all for the future.
Go ahead.
Good morning, I am Vera Del Pozzo, I am a budget advocate. I am representing the Boyle Heights Neighborhood Council. The first thing I want to do is thank all of you for accepting the documents that we gave you, for reviewing them, and implementing the actions that we recommended. The budget advocates are the representatives of the ninety-six neighborhood councils, we are volunteers, and we have put hundreds of hours into this process. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. After Eric Previn is Linda Lee, Molly Rhodes, and Connie Taylor-Broaddus.
Madam President, is there a quorum at the moment? Do you have all the members, or ten at least?
Sir, you can start.
Is there a question? Okay, fine, I'm happy to go on the topic. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran, and thank you for your shepherding through this budget. There were three weeks of meetings, but there was a number of those meetings that were canceled, just to be fair. There were a hundred members of the public who did speak, some of them were repetitive, and that is okay. The budget is at a hundred-and-sixty-five-point-one-nine million after some changes. The changes are of note. The city clerk is getting two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more money to help the Neighborhood Council, which is very, very interesting with their elections. Police overtime, regrettably, is up thirty-four-point-seven million dollars. We have, the mayor's office outlined the various challenges with the budget, obviously between revenue and expenditure. In terms of revenue, the Citation Processing Group was asked by the, Ms. So, the, sort of the management consultant for the mayor, I forget her exact title, Legislative Analyst or something like that, to work on improving the citation process, especially in terms of friendliness and fairness, and there has been no work there. There is a hundred thousand dollars earmarked for that process, but that is not necessarily add up for help. The General Services has increased their leasing expenses by a million dollars, which I was having a hard time understanding how that qualifies as increased services. It sounds like an increased cost. And the other items that, of course, caught my interest were the ACE program. This is Mr. Englander's very, very interesting idea, to add to the scope of work of Xerox by tagging local residents with various crimes and also animal service crimes. Animal Service has acknowledged that there are at least forty, if I'm not mistaken, particular offenses that we will be hopefully rolling out very soon, so we can start tagging the residents with various bills. Wait a minute.
Thank you.
Was that two minutes?
Thank you. Next speaker, Linda Lee, Molly Rhodes, and Connie Taylor-Broaddus.
Good morning, my name's Linda Lee. I'm representing the Olympic Park Neighborhood Council, as well as the budget advocates. I'm here actually just to express our appreciation and to, on behalf of the budget advocates, I want to thank the city council for its support of the Neighborhood Council system, the budget advocates, and most especially the Empower LA, what was once known as the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Oh, and a special recognition to Council President Westen, whose recent announcement was very well-received by the budget advocates regarding the support that you're going to be offering to Empower LA. Again, I express my appreciation and thank you very much for taking our side on this.
Thank you, ma'am. Molly Rhodes, Connie Taylor-Broaddus, and John Walsh.
Good morning, council. My name is Molly Rhodes, I'm a research and policy analyst with SEIU seven-two-one, and I'm here in tandem today with Mr. Art Swetman, who'll be testifying later. We're here to talk about tree trimming allocations in the budget. The mayor's budget initially proposed four million in outside contracts for tree trimming work, and there's been ample policy discussion in the last year about how contracts have skyrocketed because we don't have any regular tree trimming forces in the city left. We only have one emergency crew left in the city, so we're requesting that the budget create two mechanized tree trimming crews. We can do that because, without any impact to the budget, because an extra two-point-five million was added, so the total budget for contracts right now is at six-point-five million, which is astronomical. You're at three million this year, and you've just started spending, so we're looking for a solution to this issue in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Walsh, hold on for just a second, I'm gonna call for Connie Taylor-Broaddus. Is she here?
No, she's not here.
Okay. Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
I'm also blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com. I spoke several times at the budget hearing, I'm one of the hundred people. One particular item we need is the slashing of our deputy city attorney salaries, and we want to cut slash the amount of outside attorneys. You're spending millions of dollars on outside attorneys. Mr. Silverstein went, "You had three outside attorneys against us on the Twin Tower case." So, we want that. Also, we're very worried about people who are going to join the city council in July first, Mr. Marquis, I neglect his last name, doesn't come to mind, but Mr. Marquis and Mrs. David Rue, that's why we're asking Mr. Corcoran to keep them posted, the new city councilmen, before they take office. In particular, your Korean-American, please, Mr. Corcoran.
Next speaker, no applause, please. Next speaker, Punam Goyal, Sherri Reboard, and Art Swetman.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Punam Goyal, I serve three neighborhood councils, North Hill East, North Hill West, and Center Hollywood. I'm here to thank every one of all fifteen council members, because City Council Connection Project, I was in charge, so your staff and you have cooperated with me, and we had successfully met every fifteen members. Our dream was to make our city a world-class city, and you fifteen have authority and the power to do this, so we are well-connected and we keep our communication open, so we can make our city a world-class city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sherri Reboard and Art Swetman, followed by Jonathan Missouri.
Good morning, council members. I'm here to reiterate a request we made of the Housing Committee to protect CDBG funding for evidence-based health self-management programs at its current fiscal year fourteen-fifteen level, rather than making the cut that was originally proposed in the mayor's budget. We are, we being your community-based organizations, are in the process of changing the way we do business on evidence-based programs, from a publicly-funded model to a private-pay model. A half dozen of us are working as a network right now to deliver these programs under a contract with Blue Shield of California, and it is creating revenue streams, and it is also broadening the population that has access to these programs. These relate back to one of the first presentations made this morning, because they contribute to the effort to keep people from calling 911 and out of hospitals and emergency rooms. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, followed by Jonathan Missouri and Henry Marin.
Hi, Art Swetman, I am a tree surgeon with the Bureau of Street Services and a member of SEIU seven-two-one. Last week, I was called out to CD eleven Pacific Palisades on Tiopa to look at some trees that have been damaged really badly by some contractors, some camphor trees, that had been trimmed a couple days before. You guys are adding two-point-five million right now to the budget for more contracting, and what we're asking is that you bring that money back and allow us to create a hiring plan, to bring more of this back in-house. Two-point-five million dollars for contracting gets you one thing, besides bad tree trimming, it only gets you tree trimming. If you bring that money back in-house, you allow us flexibility to not only trim trees, but also respond to emergencies quicker, deal with dead trees, which is a huge issue that's growing in this city, replant trees that have been removed, and remove stumps that have been, that are still remaining from the trees that have... that have been, that are still remaining from the trees that have come down. Please give us that money back, allow us to create a hiring plan. Let us show the city that urban forestry can manage the city trees better than anyone else because we have the flexibility and the knowledge how to do this work, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan Missouri, followed, Manzori, I'm sorry, followed by Henry Marin.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. My name is Jonathan Manzuri, and I'm representing Angelino's Organizing for Education. I'm a current organizer and a former teacher. We wanted to thank the Council today for listening to the concerns of our teachers, our families, and our community members regarding crossing guards and supporting the funding necessary to make sure that our younger students are able to walk to school safely. We wanted to thank also Councilman Weezer for joining the teachers and community members at an event last month that we had, advocating for more crossing guards. We wanted to thank the councilmen who took the time and the care to speak with us about this issue, and thank you guys for doing the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Henry Marin, followed by Nancy Volpert and Jay Handel.
Yes, I want to thank the members of this council for providing funds for the General Service Department to do plumbing and craft services, and building operation engineer and surveying. And, but records show you've been sheltering the money of these employees and funneling it into union bank accounts, and funneling 10% of their pay, and placing it in city bank accounts. That's co-mailing the public employee funds with general funds. That's called reserve funds for future disasters. Now, in this budget here, it shows that all this money that you failed to contribute to public employee pension benefit payments in the past for these employees employed more than 1,000 hours, you gotta provide back payment for these employees, and pay a $500 fee for each employee who was employed more than 1,000 hours under a government general service department or the Housing Authority Department doing construction and renovation work for the people of L.A. Now, we know you took the 10% and used, at the discretion of the City Council, to serve the people in 35 planning districts. We know where that 10% went to. You used it for the benefit people, and we don't mind you using that, but you gotta give us some credit for it. And the money in the union bank, you gotta recover what you invested and provide the principal and interest due. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, I'm Nancy Volpert, I'm the Director of Public Policy at Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles. And for many years I've stood in front of you and we've had conversations about the fact that budgets reflect values. And it's my pleasure to be standing here and saying thank you because you decided as a council to reinvest in services for the most frail of our community residents. By putting money back into domestic violence shelter operations and evidence-based programs for seniors, the 100,000 frail clients that we serve across the city each year will get services that are life-saving, and, as well as cost-saving, but really life-saving and quality-enhancing. And we are deeply appreciative and hope that those reinvestments that made it through the budget process will make it through to the vote tomorrow, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to reinvest in our community. Thanks.
Next speaker, please hold your applause. Next speaker, followed by Brett Shears, Juana Cala, and Susan Reimers.
Good afternoon, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Jay Handel, I am the co-chair of the Budget Advocates for the Neighborhood Council System. First, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in shepherding the budget through, because it's not an easy task under, obviously, bad conditions from the past. I want to thank the department heads, I want to thank the CAO and the CLA, especially the CAO for the rapid report back on our white paper. Hopefully, all of you have seen and read at least part of the white paper. My request today would be that, in the past, the Budget Advocates have come before council, before budget, to actually have the white paper considered. I think we deserve at least that much added respect. Budget and finance took us, but we think the entire council should see us and let us have that input according to the charter, to the entire City Council. The 2020 Commission got that respect two years ago. We certainly believe that the Budget Advocates, a charter-mandated group, should have that exact same opportunity to come before you and have our voices heard, and have the CAO's report debated around the horseshoe as well. I do want to thank Councilmember Bonin for getting the extra money in for the homeless situation. I think that was a major step. I want to thank Councilmember Wesson and Councilmember Kukorian for helping the Department in Neighborhood Empowerment, which still struggles. And I'm gonna leave you on this note as we talk about online voting. If anyone on Sunday watched Fareed Zakari and his whole expose Sunday about online voting around the world and in cities in this country, this budget eliminated online voting tests for the Neighborhood Councils, and it was a big mistake. So, I would ask you to reinstate that money, not make the department juggle personnel, and get online voting in, and go online and take a look at that Fareed Zakari. It was very interesting, thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Brett Shears, followed by Ms. Cala and Susan Reimers.
Hi, thanks so much. My name is Brett Shears, I'm a resident of CD 1, Councilman Sadio's district, and I've had a lot of success working with him and his office, especially Anna Gomez, who I'd like to thank personally. I'm also a member of the Budget Advocates, where I served as a chair of the ITA and General Services Committee, and I testified before the economic, the Budget Committee. And I really just want to tell you how much I appreciate you all taking these recommendations seriously, as Jay just mentioned, really looking at the white paper and the CAO report back on those issues. And I want to take a special moment to talk about the role of technology in the budget because I think the positive advances in the budget on technology is really important. So, the power to improve communication between departments, not only between departments, but also between residents and the city, is just crucial. Concepts like open data and supply management systems, or management systems in general, really are gonna not only create better efficiencies, but also, like I said, improve that communication that I think is vital. And in terms of technology, it's just one of many issues we're working on, the Budget Advocates, but I was very appreciative of the response for the budget this year in that particular arena. And I would hope that the City Council, the department, various departments, and the Neighborhood Councils and the Budget Advocates can work together in the future as well as they did this year, and I just really appreciate all that you have done for that and the respect that you've given us, thank you.
Next speaker.
Well, all this budget makes everybody's head spin because, to begin with, where do you get the money? Well, you start with the printing press. Can I have my time back?
No, Mr. Cala, we held your time, go ahead.
Oh.
You can continue.
Yeah, there's some stuff going on out there. I heard that earlier on the train. This is a dangerous city, it really is. Anyway, the budget, I hope it accommodates. Well, let's start with, how do we get the money?
Hold his time.
Is this a war zone? They took two...
Let's continue.
I know, it was 15, now it's 13.
Go ahead, Mr. Cala.
Anyway, my speech is all broken up due to emergencies. I'm ready for the San Andreas movie, see? You gotta go in there with a helmet.
Thank you, Mr. Cala. Next speaker, Susan Reimers, followed by Jasmine Ortiz and Carla Carlini.
Good afternoon, Council. Susan Reimers, I am a budget representative for Alleejen Valley Riverside Neighborhood Council, and also a budget advocate. And I just wanted to, again, bring to your attention the white paper that was attached to File 15-0600. I was part of the Infrastructure Committee, and I think that it should be no surprise to anybody, we have a major infrastructure problem here in Los Angeles. In fact, if you go ahead and Google Water Main Breaks, the next thing that pops up is Los Angeles. And it has a lot of lovely pictures of everything from UCLA to West Hollywood, to the Beverly Grove incident recently. And we've also had two in Echo Park, in the same spot.
Please hold her time, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, please continue. All right. So, as I was saying, if you go ahead and you Google...
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Spindler, can you please sit down? Ma'am, I'm sorry about that, please continue.
So, we clearly, we have an infrastructure problem here in the city of Los Angeles. And the committee that I was on, the Infrastructure Committee, we started talking with some of the other departments, and what we found was that even in our little volunteer capacity, it's really, it's a major problem. And our major takeaway, and we really want to bring this to your attention, it is in the white paper, is that we really recommend a blue ribbon Citizens Committee to study and analyze the infrastructure around Los Angeles, what it's gonna need, and to have this be from experts, to have this not be layman council who were elected, or people who are managers of a department that may have an advantage, or a particular bias. But to really have it be something that the city can take a look at, to come away with some real recommendations. And again, I wanted to highlight that to you, it is in the white paper, and thank you very much for listening, have a great afternoon.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Jasmine Ortiz, followed by Carla Carlini.
Good morning, my name is Jasmine Ortiz, and I'm a policy analyst at Ultimate Health Services. Today I'm here to represent the Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition. We represent over 45 members, organizations, individuals, and advocates who greatly appreciate the council's continued support for the evidence-based practice programs. Last year alone, more than 4,000 seniors participated in evidence-based programs at senior service organizations throughout the city. The demand for these classes continued to grow dramatically despite the reductions. These programs continue to keep seniors living independently in our communities. We urge the council to supplement the restoration of funding for EBP at the same level as last year. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Carla Carlini, followed by Dixon Durn and Nancy Wired.
Good afternoon, Council. I am Carla Carlini, I'm president and general manager of LA 36, the educational and community channel for the city of L.A. I'm here to request your continued funding of our channel as we were once again cut out of the mayor's budget this year. We are a channel by the city, for the city, and we were never designed to be self-sufficient. In fact, we were designed to be given a grant from the franchise fees. Franchise fees are paid by cable subscribers to fund channels like ours. And in case you're wondering, last year those franchise fees reached an excess of $30 million. We received last year only $255,000 of it, and we are due to receive $0 of it this year. If we go dark, it would have a tremendous impact on the city. Again, the money is there. Furthermore, within the last two weeks, the ITA has received an unanticipated nearly $600,000 in franchise fees due to an audit of AT&amp;T. Those are unallocated funds, the money is there for us. The ITA supports us, and there is great value in what we do. I beg of you to ask the 9,000 and some teachers who were essentially credentialed because they were able to take classes on LA 36 and watch their programming on our channel, or the thousands of the community college students that every day watch our programming and take classes online. We also were mandated by the city in 2009 to carry all public access content, and we do so willingly, and we do a very good job at it. I ask you, Council, to continue to support LA 36. We are a little tiny gem in the city, and we serve a whole lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is, please hold your applause, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Herman. Next speaker, Dixon Durn, followed by Nancy Wired and Ranny Rosenberg.
Madam President and Councilpersons, my name is Dixon Durn. I am a past chair and current member of the Board of LA 36. I'm also an attorney, and I've been acting as the channel's pro bono attorney in the connection with depositions and discovery and the like that have been served on the channel in the dispute in which the city filed against Time Warner, and which, as we understand it, from some of the discovery, Time Warner is responding by questioning whether funds contributed by it are being used by the city as required under the various statutes. Naturally, to date, we have been very supportive of the city in our contacts with Time Warner's attorneys, and have made it clear that we are beneficiary of payments that the city has received from Time Warner in the past, and that we think those payments are appropriate. As Carla said, my understanding is that the city collects around $30 million in franchise fees from Time Warner subscribers, which are used in part to support public interest, educational, governmental channels, peg channels like ours. However, I've been advised that in recent years, only 40% of those monies actually come to your ITO, ITA department, and that from that, LA 36 receives and has received in the past approximately $250,000. I understand also that this year there is no allocation at all for that, which would mean that the station would go dark. The, in short, we get the $225,000 or $250,000, $1,000 from a portion of franchise fees. We also get an additional $250 for capital costs under a resolution adopted by the city.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Nancy Wired, followed by Ranny Rosenbloom.
Hello, I'm Nancy Bradley Wired, and I have a, I've had a successful career in television, rising through the ranks from, at CBS, from secretary to mid-level executive positions. I was the producer on The Young and the Restless for 20 years, an active member of the Television Academy, and I served as governor, its secretary, and four terms as vice chairman. I also serve on LA 36's board. LA 36 meets its mission in every way, successfully educating and entertaining viewers with its program. At the core, we always remember that we were created by the city, for the city, to run the educational channel. This has been achieved by leveraging our small contribution from the city and earned revenue, $4 million in 10 years. As a channel, we return high value for our city hall constituents. From the beginning, it was determined that the financing for LA 36 for startup and annual costs would be from an annual allocation of franchise fees. And it was anticipated that these monies would increase to a ceiling of $1 million for the annual budget. Rather than this occurring, the budget has been reduced, and this year, there is no allocation for our operating budget. LA 36 cannot survive without its annual contribution. While the channel, while the channel is under the astute management of Carla Carlini and has brought in monies, only a portion of that goes to the operational costs. The majority of those dollars have been used to grow the station into a high-definition channel with expanded programming. Those changes were necessary to keep the channel viable and operational. I call upon you to right this wrong. The city must continue to support LA36 at a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to preserve the benefits LA36 confers to the citizens of L.A.
Thank you, ma'am.
You, our city leaders, must allocate to thirty-six this money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ronnie Rosenbloom, followed by Trenton Cornelius.
Yeah, hi. My name is Randy Rosenbloom, sports director at LA36. And for the last decade, we've been the leading carrier for prep sports in Southern California. No one has gone into the community and talked to the people about local sports more than LA36. You know, I look out, and we have Mr. Weezer over there, and we've done so much with the East L.A. Classic. I look at Mr. Bloomingfield over there, and in the San Fernando Valley, and I'm a Valleyite. We cover El Camino High School and their girls' championships in softball and soccer, and the boys of Taft and their great basketball units. We're the ones that go out, grassroots, get into the community, and do the sports. I saw Mr. Labange walking around, and I noticed that his area has his school, his beloved Marshall barristers. And when they had their sports Hall of Fame, there were two cameras out there. One from Philadelphia, because Andy Reid, an NFL coach, was being honored going into the Hall of Fame, and he's from Marshall. And LA36, there was no one else out there to give it local coverage. Mr. Bernard Parks knows about us, because his Crenshaw Cougars are the last championship team, really close to a professional team, because we don't have one. His Cougars won in the Coliseum when they had the great DeAnthony Thomas, now with the Kansas City Chiefs. You know, we've had so many people discovered on LA36. Nick Young, who now plays basketball for the Lakers, he was at Cleveland High School in Rosetta. Mike Mustakis of Chatsworth, a fabulous baseball player who made it to the World Series last year for the Royals when he hit a home run for Kansas City. There's been so many of them. Jordan Farmar at Taft High School in Woodland Hills. Paul George, a great, great basketball player, now an NBA All-Star, was first found on our air. Thank you for listening. Keep LA36 grassroots sports for everyone in SoCal.
I'm going to ask the audience, for the fifth time, please do not clap during public... Go ahead, Mr. Cornelius.
Yes, my name is Trent Cornelius. I'm in charge of athletics for Los Angeles Unified School District. And I thank you for the time today. I just want to speak on behalf of LA36. I've been with the district for twenty-one years as a coach, as an athletic director, and now downtown overseeing all of the athletic programs. And in my experiences, I have found that LA36 has always done a great job of not only covering all the city, but they selectively make sure that they stake out East Side, South Bay, West Side, Valley, not just the high-performing teams, but even the everyday teams too, and all the kids that want to compete. It's not an elite show. It's really designed to give full coverage of the city. They do this with their contests. They do this with their games. As a coach, I think I had about three or four games televised, as I coached for twelve years at Manual Arts High School. And that was, for most of those kids, their only exposure ever to have these games televised on television. They often make the DVDs available to the kids, so they can have that keepsake forever. They also are really big on gender equity. They have, they cover just as many female sports as they do male sports. They have a sports show that they record on a weekly basis, in which they bring coaches, athletic directors, student athletes in. It's great for their public speaking skills. They get interviewed. They really get life skills. It's not just about sports. And that's what I really want to leave you with, LA36. They obviously have a full realm of programming, but from the sports basis, it's really good. And we live in a city so large that prep sports really doesn't get any coverage. If you go to other cities, you will see it on their main stations, but LA36 is all we have.
Thank you, sir. There are no more cards on this item. Mr. Clerk, we're closing the public hearing on this item.
Very good, Madam President.
Let's move on to Item 20 for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Madam President, there's been a request to continue this matter to this next Tuesday, May 26.
Okay, without objection? Thank you. Next item, Item 1?
Item 1 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, Victory Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Victory Blogging at JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, or Victory Tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is number one, and this concerns street lighting. Now, I know it's difficult for you to accept, but I always tell you what an excellent job you do in street lighting. Since you changed the street lighting system, we used to get the lights off at Hollywood Yuck and Vine for weeks. Now, we only had one lighting problem in the past four or five years. It was fixed the next day. So when you do an excellent job, I will be the first to say what a great job you do in street lighting in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Michael Hunt. Item 1?
Street lighting approved, Michael Hunt.
Thank you very much. These speakers are out of time. Mr. Clerk, Juan Alcala, Wayne Spindler, and Mr. Herman for Item 1, but we're going to file their cards. Thank you. No more cards for Item 1. Can you open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Item passes. Next item, Item 8?
Item 8 called special for cards.
Eric Previn, Item 8?
Yes, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And this is a vacation of some property in our district near Fruitland. It represents about thirty-four hundred square feet, which is an enormous amount of property to give away in a very, very vital area. I think it's worth a couple million bucks. I could be wrong. But we gave away a city firehouse for a million dollars to a developer. And I would urge people who are interested in Studio City land use issues to come to the Studio City Neighborhood Council this evening, where there will be some discussion. It's at 7:00 PM at Radford. And I would really ask the city council to look at this item in particular, because it doesn't say it's for a hotel development, but I'm pretty sure it is. The people involved, they don't know it all. Hemma and Saga Kumar, the owners, along with a group called Studio Place LLC. And I asked my CD2 folks about this matter, and they evinced no knowledge about it, including Caro Terosian. It's my understanding is a land use guy. So we have a big problem here down at City Hall in terms of informing the public about what's actually going on. This looks like a run-of-the-mill piece of business. It's actually quite a gift of public funds. So I would ask the city council to look at this item before approving it. Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Alcala and Antonio Ramirez are out of time, so we're going to file your cards for Item 8. There are no more cards. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item passed. Item 27?
And that's 27 called special for cards.
Byron Barajas? Mr. Barajas, are you here? Mr. Walsh? Thank you. No more cards on this item. Item 27?
I guess...
Oh, Mr. Barajas, you are here. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah. Let me reference Emergency Management Department. Now, if this is a... What the funds will be for this department, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars. I think the only question I have is... Or I should bring up, this department deals with, obviously, emergency, obviously, Management Department. Now, the thing is, is... My question would be, if the water issue is a crisis, what will they do about the crisis of water? I would bring this up in general public comment, but we are in an emergency. And I think that anybody who does not look into their service departments of emergency such as this, they should ask them, what are they doing about the water crisis? And it's not, I'm not talking about conservation. There's a specific measure that this department in particular should actually look into, and that's what I think I should be bringing up during general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. Antonio Ramirez and Mr. Alcala are both out of time. We're going to file your cards for Item 27. That concludes cards for this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, Item 33?
Item 33 called special for cards.
John Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I live about two hundred and fifty feet from the Hollywood Walk of Fame. And Bobby Flay, yes, he's a celebrity chef. He deserves one. But the question is the quality of the stars. The old stars are in good shape. I just want you to see all the media that had pictures of the B.B. King stars with the flowers. Four gigantic cracks in the B.B. King star, because if you're black, they don't give a rat's ass about your star, Mr. Curran Price. If he'd been a white man, they would have replaced the star. And if you'd been a black man, Mr. Price, you would be angry at what they're doing and allowing B.B. King and all the black stars. But you're as white as I am, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Hunt, and Mr. Herman, and Wayne Spindler are all out of time. We're going to file cards for Item 33. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Can you please sit down? Mr. Clerk, let's go to public comment. Don Jones? Sergeants, can you please help us with our guests or continue to disrupt our meeting? I apologize for that, Mr. Jones. Go ahead.
Yatahe Sharanetishna. I'm here on behalf of the new president of the Navajo Nation, Mr. Russell Begay, to invite you, to invite him, to come and participate in a meeting with you and some of your elected officials, particularly the Department of Water and Power. We believe that many of the issues that are affecting your town, your city, with regard to the drought, affect us as well. You may know that on the 15th of May, your Department of Water and Power agreed to divest itself of the Navajo generating stations, but retain the transmission corridors so that they can accommodate renewable energy, the renewable energy from our reservation. We ask that if you're going to attempt to do this, it's in essence stripping away one of the assets, the power generation, leaving us there with the coal burning, with a diminished asset, coal-fired power. You, City Council, and your department have declared are the way of the past. However, these unilateral decisions...
Thank you, sir. You're out of time. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Bill Watkins? Bill Watkins? Next speaker, Sean?
What a joke last night, this election. I'm glad it's over. I'm not happy with it. I'm not happy with this damn election. Ramsey should have won. The cards should be recounted. I'm not happy with it.
Thank you, Sean. Next speaker, Melrose Larry Green, followed by Jose Martinez?
Good afternoon. I'm Melrose Larry Green, and I'm speaking as an individual, not as a volunteer for Carolyn Ramsey's campaign. What we witnessed last night was disgusting and disgraceful. David Ryu ran the nastiest, meanest, filthiest campaign I've ever seen in forty-one years in politics. And I think that everybody in the city council, and the city attorney's office, and the Ethics Commission should investigate his deceptive and fraudulent mailings, where he pretended to be as if they were from the L.A. city. L.A. city election alert. Polling places have been moved. It was David Ryu, independent expenditures. When he used the name of Mike Antonovich from the California Republican Party and called himself Democrat David Ryu, it's supposed to be a nonpartisan election. And furthermore, he vilified Tom Labange and Carolyn Ramsey. And let me go on record as showing all of you that nobody in this country, Senate, United Congress, up to President Obama, ever worked as hard as Tom Labange.
Thank you, sir.
And I think recall is an option, and this man also has a history of sexual abuse.
Sir?
He's been alleged to have committed rape on two occasions.
Sir, you're out of time. Thank you very much. Jose Martinez? Jose Martinez? Jose Martinez? Fernando Guerra? Fernando Guerra? Trenton Cornelius? Trenton Cornelius? Eric Previn? Followed by Henry Marin? And Byron Barajas? Mr. Previn, are you speaking?
I would just like... Yes, it's Eric... Hello? Is it... Okay, yes, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And there was a lot of discussion about Channel 36, and I must say, it sounds very supportable, what they were talking about. And it does, of course, veer the discussion toward Channel 35, and there's Justin Wesson peering off to the side. I must tell you, folks, we have to do a little better. Mr. Krikorian, it is funny, but it's not that funny to reduce the public to very small in a telecast that is paid for by the taxpayers. And I will say back to 36 for one moment. 36, Time Warner, our friends and cable suppliers slash predators, have been, as you know, not paying their entire franchise fee appropriately. The county has to sue them in a regular basis in order to get the actual franchise fees for them. So I think that the Channel 36 issue has to be something that you discuss in the back room, along with the other little fixes. But really, and then the other final point is that tomorrow at the budget hearing, you absolutely have to open the roll for the public. It's not a good idea to say, no, we're just going to discuss it amongst ourselves. It's a better, consistent with transparency way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Marin, followed by Byron Barajas and Juan Alcala. Mr. Marin, are you speaking?
Yes. What kind of half-ass counsel this is? I only see five people in here. Huh? What kind of half-ass... Mr. Clerk, let's get your ass over here and get, sit down where you get paid, be doing, listen to me. Now, what the hell's wrong with y'all? Diverting money from public employer pension benefit plans, taking public funds and combing them with general funds and calling them emergency funds. And we know it, because you gave us the numbers, Mr. Busciano. Accounts 1120, 1121, show where the hell you took the money from. From the total, they got to be provided to the force account to pay the benefits and wages of city employees. Now, what the hell's wrong with y'all? Mr. Cannon saying, you ain't got to be no genius to figure out what the hell y'all fucking up. All you got to do is write an in subtract.
Thank you, Mr. Marin. Byron Barajas? Byron Barajas, Juan Alcala, and Antonio Ramirez.
I want to bring up two items, actually. First is, if anybody has ever heard of ionization, wet modification, you could look into rain on requests. I recently spoke with an individual of this development... I recently spoke with an individual of this development industry, that they told me that the federal government can actually fund this project to cause it to rain. The estimates are 40% to 400% participation. So you could cause it to rain. Again, that website is Rain on Request. The other is, declassified DIA documents can bring down Obama now. The DIA, or the Freedom of Information Act, has actually given the citizens the opportunity to look into the lies of Obama in terms of what happened in Benghazi to our ambassador.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. Next speaker, Juan Akala, followed by Antonio Ramirez and Wayne Spindler.
I want to extend my thanks to Bill the Comet, DJ my key artist, because he has invited me to watch San Andreas. And I went to say to the guy from Norm's, I would speak more on your issue, but you refused to give me a free meal. I hope your restaurant falls apart. Okay, well, that was mean, wasn't it? Nah, not really. Nothing's gonna happen. No matter what I say, nothing's gonna happen. We need to end homelessness, you idiot, city attorney. Do you have a place to live? City clerk, do you have a place to live? Voting clerk, do you have a place to live? Mr. Price, do you have a place to live? Mr. Parks, do you have a place to live? All you assholes have a place to live. Most people around the city are having to pay stupid rents.
Thank you. Next speaker, Antonio Ramirez, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Thank you. We have a horrid, wetback and chungo Latino gang epidemic in Los Angeles. Remember that everything that they have, they have it because they have stolen it from law-abiding Americans. Yet we have over 11 million illegal felons in the midst of a suffocating drought plight. Deport, 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 no amnesty, no asylum, and stop subsidizing Los Angeles, stop subsidizing them for everything. Secondly, we have a grave phenomenon called gang stalkings, who target innocent, law-abiding citizens, yours truly. And therefore, I recommend you Google search, wonderful man, ex-FBI agent Ted Gunderson, or Ted Gunderson, who meticulously and emphatically expounds and divulges the secrets of gang stalkings, who perpetrate the crimes, like the FBI, the CIA, the ACLU, Maldiv, all Latino organizations, the NAACP, the Black Panthers, the Masons, and the Freemasons, the LAPD, and Sheriff's Department. Alleluia. Thank you, God.
Thank you. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, followed by Mr. Herman and John Walsh?
Victory for the Koreans, David Ryu! Yeah, baby, David Ryu. Or Ryu, or Ryu. Korean-American taking his seat July, replacing the useless Tom Labange. Amen. Finally, an Asian-American will sit on this racist panel, the first time in 20-plus years since Michael Woo! And David Ryu rhymes with woo! So it's good karma, man. Now, I'm reading this article in the LA Watts Times, "Nigger Passes Law to Stem Human Smuggling"? What the hell is this? And Current Price was on the cover of this. Nigger passes law to stem human smuggling? Just because somebody passes a law against human smuggling, they call them the N-word? I need an explanation.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman, followed by John Walsh and Michael Hunt?
Madam, if you have an illegal barrier there, but in regards to the Ru-Ru victory over Labange's staff, I celebrate it in all regards. Thank you, Ru-Ru. Now we have an interrelationship on an international basis, because, again, I'm not pronouncing the words right, Krikorian. Ha, ha, ha! But anyways, it's good to know now. Now we're gonna have Asian-American support on this horseshoe of fools, and we're gonna see how some of us with our language barriers, like Ms. Nury from the Valley, who spent two years in Pacoima, building her case into console. But again, it's only Nury mode here in... Hey, hey, look, Krikorian's back. He came back to sit down and take it, take it in the back. Don't forget, First Amendment right, Krikorian. It's our right.
Thank you, Mr....
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org announcing the biggest upset in the past 40 or 50 years in city council, since Zev won his election, which was a big upset. David Ryu, now you know on my website, for the past two months, we have been promoting Ryu. People say, no one pays attention to your website. Ryu won by 1,600 votes. It wasn't even close. His opponent had all of the endorsements, the newspapers, everything. We're not gonna attack her. We're gonna tell you that David Ryu is coming here, and it was a huge upset. And why? Because we who got up here at city council, and you out there who watched, listened to us, not to Tom Labange, he's ending his office in defeat. His handpicked candidate was whipped, and he's coming into a city council where 13 people do the Lewinsky job to... our man up there.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Michael Hunt?
Let's talk about retaliation. They beat up a mentally ill kid since I got my $215,000. They shot one nigger since I got my $215,000. They gave me about 30 or 40 tickets. Chief Charlie Beck has given the Pacific Division a right to kill, and predominantly African-Americans. Retaliation is a son of a bitch when you get pulled over for being a pimp. And I'm not a pimp. You guys ought to all fucking listen here. And let me tell you why. When a black man get pulled over 30 times after receiving $215,000, that's retaliation. The city ought to be ashamed of themselves. All the black people, all of you motherfuckers are sitting down. Next is you. You think it's me? But next is gonna be you. It ain't gonna be funny.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred members, any announcements? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, just wanted to remind you again, we'll be meeting here tomorrow for consideration of the city's budget. The meeting is agendized for 9:00, but we will begin deliberation, actually, on the budget at 9:30. It's never been my practice, Mr. Wesson, but we don't expect that it'll be a long, grueling day. We expect that we'll be able to get through it pretty quickly. But again, I want to urge members, any amending motions, please submit them today. It'll make things go much more smoothly tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Any other announcements?
Oh, Madam President, also, since public comment was satisfied today, just for people who may be watching at home, we will not be taking public comment on the budget tomorrow.
Thank you for that clarification.
This will only be to act on the budget and the motions.
No other announcements? Any adjournments? Well, thank you very much. Then we conclude our meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.